Welcome to the 2021-2022 Board of Alden Budget Deliberations. Today is Monday, April 26, 2021, and we are concluding the Department Presentation portion of the 2021-2022 Automatic Budget Process. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and as we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lumans' executive orders, this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature via Zoom, and please do not speak over other individuals, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name and address prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
United States of America.
To the republic
For which it's
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Beatty, you're muted.
Present, sorry.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Genentasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden. Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Prantay.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith. Alderman Winthrop Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitalli.
Here.
Alderman Willis.
Here.
Thirteen present.
Tony, I was here. I don't know if you hear me.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry. Fourteen present.
We have fourteen present. We do have a forum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. There are motions to come out of recess.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to come out of recess. Any discussion? Roll call or vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor.
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio.
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman.
Yes.
Alderman Harla.
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe.
Yes.
Alderman Prantay.
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith. Alderman Frank Smith. Alderman Winthrop Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Sutton.
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Yes.
Alderman Vitro.
Yes.
Alderman Vitalli.
Yes.
Alderman Willis.
Yes.
And Alderman Frank Smith, I didn't hear your vote. All right, we have thirteen, and Alderman Frank Smith must be having difficulties.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion almost passes unanimously except for one exception, where one, when not present, or one not having difficulties with his Wi-Fi. The first department on our agenda this evening is the Borough of Woodmont, page eighty-eight. Ed Bonessi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board, and all the other members that are attending. I'm Ed Bonessi, warden in the Borough of Woodmont. I believe that we have not had any changes in terms of your personnel, so I'll just briefly say that the borough is a municipality within the municipality, and our budget is for all of the public works in the six miles of roadway within the borough limits. We did request, and it's tough for me to look here on different pages on my computer, but I, we did request an increase, and the mayor agreed to a, I believe, a $5,000 or $3,000 increase. I know this sounds crazy, but I try and see things on my computer, and I'm afraid to move my mouse too far. But we are currently in a deficit situation with this particular current fiscal year between the summer storm, IESA, and the $18,000 in the snow overage. I'm sure the city must be over on their snow budget as well. So I am hoping that we can get that small increase that we have negotiated with the mayor, and at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any of our aldermen have any questions for Mr. Bonessi? Nobody's raising their hand, Ed.
And I apologize. Last Monday, I was, I never received the Zoom link or the meeting invitation, so I would have been here, Phil. You know me, I've never missed one of these meetings, so I, I do apologize for, for not being there, but I am here to.
Thank you, Mr. Bonessi. That's fine. Thank you for what you all, thank you for all the good work you do for the Borough of Woodmont also. Alderman Genentasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Bonessi. Good evening. Mr. Bonessi, can you just clarify, because I'm looking at your proposed department request. You requested 249. The mayor recommended 238. So what discussion or what agreement is in place for for the extra funding that you're alluding to?
The, the extra funding has to, had to do originally with projects, sidewalk projects that are overdue in the borough. There was a sidewalk project that we wanted to try to put in using some, some grant funding, but there was no, there was no work done, no engineering work that needed to be done. It was a section of road that goes from, from between the Adams Plaza up New Haven Avenue up to Belmont Street, and we were trying to get some sidewalks in there. It's the only area which goes from the West Haven Line up to the Adams Plaza, and it's kind of dangerous there. It's narrow. The road narrows down as you go down the hill, and we were trying to use some state grant money to do a sidewalk and crosswalk project there, and we were delayed because we did not have any engineering drawings. I worked with the mayor's office, Justin Rosen, and I believe Chris Saley. We also spoke with them about it. And this is, this is a project, it's a safety project, and that was the main reason for the increase. But now compounded upon that is the, the overage with the snow budget, because we agreed to X amount, and we, we had no reserve funds, and now we're over on the snow budget of 18,000. And I believe the IESA, we were $28,000. That was unexpected expenses from, from the current year.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up. Mr. Bonessi, so your, your request is 249. The Finance Board recommended 238, and again, the mayor also recommended 238. So if we pass this budget as presented for 238, what are the implications?
The implications are that we will put off Jim Mallico. We will use some other funding that we have from the borough tax, which is really not what is, the, the money is supposed to be used for to, to cover those additional expenses. And it will take away from paving, which we were hoping to do a paving project in the fall.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, is there any comment on, on your behalf in regards to Mr. Bonessi's submission?
No, the borough and the city have worked well over the past many years. Our Public Works has lent a hand to the borough's public works, and there's been a good symbiotic relationship. You know, we've been able to pave more miles, not just of city streets in the last couple of years, but more miles of borough streets really than ever before, and it really is a testament to Ed's leadership to get things done over there. I do know that the gas company ripped up some of the brand-new pavement that was just installed over the borough, but they have assured us that they're going to be repaving curb-to-curb. So not just a patch job, but a full reclamation and, you know, pave curb-to-curb for those streets that have been disturbed, because it has been less than five years, less than a couple of years, and in some of the cases. And that was one of the things that they, the gas company did not properly plan for. So it was actually an emergency dig. There, there was capacity issues with some of the gas lines. That being said, this is a $5,000 increase over last year. There has not been many grant-funded agencies or departments that had this amount of an increase. I think that we've worked out some of the issues moving forward with the borough. One of the things that I know they expended a lot of funds on was Storm Isaias. The federal government relatively recently, just a month or so ago, made that a formal declaration, so that there is going to be some funding that is available to the borough, to the city. The city has some reimbursements now that it is eligible that we can take advantage of, and we have taken advantage of. So that is, that's good news.
Okay, and so Mayor Blake, the 238, the $5,000 increase, you feel is sufficient for the department's requests, and it's going to meet their needs?
Well, it's the Borough of Woodmont, the municipality, and, you know, the two municipalities, I think, came to a meeting of the minds, and I think both were comfortable with that figure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitalli.
Muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ed. Ed, how you doing, guy? I'm just confused now. Is the project that you wanted a complete sidewalk, or was it road?
Originally, it was sidewalk, okay? Now, we are going to be trying to recoup money, which I was not aware of. We're going to be trying to recoup money, a portion of the money that the gas company is earmarking for patching, and they are going to do curb-to-curb everywhere where we can prove where we've had actual curb-to-curb paving over the last five years, okay? But it's still not going to, it's still not going to cover everything, because there are portions of the roadway that were not paved. Holly Avenue between Bunsen Lane Street and Anderson Avenue is not recently paved, and that whole area is being torn up. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a, a portion of the money, or we're going to take all of the money for that section that the gas company had earmarked for patching. We're going to put that toward complete paving, and then the rest of the area will have, will have curb-to-curb repaving.
But again, you're talking about curb-to-curb repaving. Where's the sidewalk come into?
No, no, no.
Because you're saying that's the only portion that is not done.
No, no. The, the area where we originally were looking for the engineering cost is New Haven Avenue between Belmont Street and Dunbar Road that has no, it's never had, it's never had a sidewalk or curb.
Understood, understood.
That was a safety, that was a safety issue that we were looking at last year. And when we were originally putting the budget together, that's what we were looking for, the additional funding for the engineering work for that, so that we'll have a shovel-ready project when, when the grants do become available again. And I, I wish I could remember the name of the grants.
Well, that, that's irrelevant at this point. My, my point was the sidewalk, and, you know, to, to Mr., to the mayor of the city, I know, Ben, your, your goal is to make the city walkable and safe. Safety is utmost in your mind. And the fact is, if we have a symbiotic relationship with the Borough of Woodmont, isn't it conceivable that we could in some way make that work? That we can put that sidewalk at, I'm sure it's not a long distance. We've done other projects in the town that have, I'm sure, have been far more expensive than, at this point. But I'm just asking, cannot that be worked out and to pave or to, to put that new sidewalk in that is requested or that is deemed necessary by the borough? To you, Mr. Mayor?
It's conceivable. This stretch that was just described, it's the first time I'm hearing of this stretch. I think he's describing an area along New Haven Ave, which is a state road. Generally, it's a state's responsibility, but it's something that we can team up with the borough and the city and the state to address.
That, that, that would sound feasible. Yeah, that would sound. But even, even because of a state road, they're responsible for the sidewalks also?
Yes.
Okay. So I just hope that we can make, you know, continue that relationship with the borough, and if we can get that expedited, that would be a great asset to you, Ed. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ray.
No further question, Mr. Ma, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Win Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, I would definitely support the $16,000 that was requested from the Borough of Woodmont. You know, I, I see, and we'll get to this department, but I see a salary increase from a department of 15%, about a $15,000 increase in salary from one of the departments. And I see that, and then I see that if, if the Borough of Woodmont does not receive the full $16,000, they have to put off paving, they have to put off other items. So I'm just wondering how we determine that there should be somebody receiving a $15,000 pay increase when a borough like Woodmont needs paving that they've indicated is extremely necessary? Through you, Mr. Chairman, and I guess that would go to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, that question was, was related to you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Smith. Again, this was the amount that everybody agreed on. There is a overall tax reduction that was presented to this board by the Board of Finance in large part because most of the departmental budgets pretty much remain flat. This was a slight increase, again, approximately $5,000 over last year's amount. Most of the grant agencies, most of the departments were relatively flat, though, from, from last year. This was an increase. I, I know that there are some projects that we have in the past teamed up with in in-kind services. I suspect that we'll continue to foster that relationship just because our public works teams do work so well together. And I know that I feel comfortable with recommending this amount. There were some projects that were contemplated as part of the borough's budget that I know that the city took over in terms of funding the cost for. So those were carved out, or should have been carved out, of the initial allocation request. And again, I think that you can ask Ed Bonessi, you know, he speaks for himself, but I think he is comfortable with this increase as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, he may be, be comfortable with that, but I, I think I am uncomfortable with the fact that we're giving $15,000 salary increases and we're cutting out a requested $11,000 that will put off work that Mr. Bonessi has indicated will be needed. And I, I'm just wondering how we can justify giving a salary increase of 15% when the Borough of Woodmont has requested a similar amount and was cut down to 5,000. It seems to me as though that is a situation that should be flipped, especially if Mr. Bonessi has indicated that it, it is paving that's needed and other items and other work that is needed. I, I just, I'm having a hard time grasping, grasping that.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, so Alderman Smith, at the end of the day, this is the opportunity to make adjustments. If the will of this board is to increase the Borough of Woodmont's budget or decrease the Borough of Woodmont's budgets, that is what this deliberative process is for. I think you've heard that there has been some initial discussions, some initial debate at both the departmental level, in this case, the municipality-to-municipality level, as well as at the Board of Finance. And our recommendations are being passed upon to this board for, you know, further deliberation. At the end of the day, this budget can be adjusted. But this is our recommendation based on all the factors involved, including, you know, past history, including expenses, some of which are being reimbursed because of federal grants that are coming down the pike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I guess I'll, I'll circle back on, on what I was referencing when we get to that department. Thank you.
Alderman Harla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Bonessi. Just a point of clarification from Alderman Smith. Are you putting off the paving project, or did you get funding from the gas company? Do the curb-to-curb, and you're, you're supplementing those funds with borough tax?
We, we are putting it off till fall, only because of the settling issue, mainly because of the settling issue, and we were planning on using next year's funds to pay for that. And it will be supplemented with the funding from the gas company. And this was something that I, I had no idea until I was told by Chris Saley that we had that opportunity. I was just really frustrated when I saw the gas company with ripping up the entire length of streets. It had to be done. It was an emergency project. We had borough residents that had no heat and no hot water, because water apparently seeped into the old low-pressure lines. This, this is a whole learning project for me. I've been on the board for twenty-some-odd years, and I'd never heard about this issue. But apparently, because there were old low-pressure lines, water seeped in, and the water got forced up by the gas into people's meters. Their meters froze during the winter. They had no heat and no hot water. So this was an emergency project, and I felt that there was nothing we could do but watch our new streets get torn up. And then Chris informed me that if we could prove that we've done the paving within the last five years, that they would do curb-to-curb. The main reason why we have been able to do more paving in the last six or seven years is because we've tagged on to the state contract with the city through Chris Saley, which we'd never really done before. My predecessor never had that opportunity. So we're buying at a much lower rate, and we're able to get more, more miles of road for our dollars, so to speak. So we feel that this, this amount that we've agreed to, we should be able to, we should be able to cover all of the costs. If we can, if we can get the, the engineering work out of it, perhaps we, we might even be able to get some in-kind service for the engineering out of the city. But the, but this, once again, I, I don't know what, it's some sort of a state grant that the sidewalk project was originally coming out of, and it was one of those last-minute things, and we were just a little bit late to the game because we didn't have the project shovel-ready, so to speak. So the money was really there for engineering. We were going to use an outside engineer for it. But then all of the paving issues with the extra cutting of the roads came up. And afterwards, we just felt that this was, this was a good compromise once we heard that extra money would be able to come in from the, from the gas company.
Okay, so for clarification, thank you. So for clarification to counter Alderman Smith's point, the paving project will not be delayed or prevented with the budget number that's currently on?
It will not be prevented. The only reason why I'm, I use the word delayed, we're delaying it for settling purposes. And this was as a recommendation from Scott Smith from the gas company and Chris Saley, and actually Jim Mallico, who is the Borough Public Works contractor. He recommended, the longer we delay, the better, because of settling.
Right.
If we let the current short-term patch settle in fall, and then we do the paving, we'll have less chance of, of undermining afterwards.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Borough of Woodmont? Seeing none, the next department on our agenda is the Transit District, page eighty-nine. Mr. Jaddak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a historic day for me. I was first on the agenda. First time in, in my history here. It's kind of odd, but not, as a small side note, the first time I came, I ended up before the board at about quarter to one in the morning. So it's a certain pleasure to be on so early. We operate fixed-route service in Milford. We operate a fixed-route service between Milford and Norwalk with Bridgeport and Norwalk, the coastal link. AV van services, services to the elderly, train station parking at the Milford Train Station. The city's grant has always been very important to us, and we've been able to match other funds with it, been able to encourage the state to continue to fund us because of it, and it's, it's a vital part of our operation. And I'd be happy to answer any Alderman's questions.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. Through you, Chairperson Vitro, to Mr. Jaddak. Thank you. Welcome, and thanks for all you do, keeping us informed about transportation. It's a good year, I guess, or a good time to be in transportation circles. We anticipate federal and state monies. So I understand, I see the flat budget and your appreciation of the fund from the city. But could you tell us a little bit, I know that you had to apply for, and fill out the transportation grant, a little bit your wish list, that what would, you would do if the money came from the feds to the state for transportation in COVID relief? And what you were thinking and, and what you did? We appreciate it.
Well, the state asked transit agencies for kind of a wish list of things that they would do or could do if they had the funds to do it. Apparently, they're anticipating a substantial amount of funds, so they wanted to be prepared with answers for the governors to, to speak on. In Milford, our local bus routes have always been on a, what they call a 60-minute headway, which means a bus comes by a certain point every 60 minutes, which is not the best service that could be provided. We've, I've always tried to get that headway reduced, and with any new funds, our first priority would be to reduce the headway to 30 minutes or 40 minutes at, at the worst. And that's be a substantial amount of money, because basically we'd be doubling, doubling the service. But that would be our number-one priority. Also, other priorities would be to increase the service on the coastal link from Milford to Norwalk. It's the most popular service that we have.
Could you say that again? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, it's the most popular service. I'm sorry, the most popular service, most, most well-attended service that we have is the Coastal Link service from, from Milford to Norwalk. It's a reverse commute and it's a worker's, worker's bus, entry-level work bus, and it gets, gets a lot of use. We want to increase the service on that. We're also hoping to do a micro-transit service, a similar to Uber service in town that would also be on the list. A contactless fare system is also on our list where you'd be able to use your, your cards, you know, proximity cards and things of that nature for fare collection, which is, goes along with the COVID and with sanitation, but also much more efficient and much better service for the customer. And then the last thing we had on our list was a joint, join the state of Connecticut with a common communication system throughout the state for transit. But that, that's our wish list of things. We've already received COVID funds because we weren't able to charge a fare for a long period of time on the buses. And we had certainly a greatly reduced income from, from the train parking. So that was able to fill the gap there, fortunately. So in that respect, our budget was whole and was remained okay. And along with the city's, city's contribution, we were able to make, make the year work pretty, pretty good. We also were able to furlough some employees and keep them with those funds. So that all worked out well, too.
Thank you. And anything about an electric fleet for those vans? Is that part of?
That's a goal of, of our governor. And we're doing studies now to electrify all of the transit facilities, meaning that they be capable of, of housing electric vehicles. Although electric vehicles are extremely expensive. They've come down in price somewhat, but they're still extremely expensive compared to, to a diesel, clean diesel bus. But that's, that's the goal. And that's where the direction that the federal government is definitely moving in the current president and his administration and the governor. So if they're in office long enough and the policy remains the same, I think we, Bridgeport just had three, three buses delivered on a kind of experimental basis and they seem to be working out pretty good. And we're certainly going to be in line for the same.
Well, thank you for all those efforts. And now, did you work alone? It seems like a lot. Or did you work with the Economic Downtown Council about bringing that worker route from Norwalk to Milford to bring in workers for business? Or is that your idea?
That route's actually been in existence for predates the Transit District.
I know, but enhancing it, I mean.
Well, we've enhanced it several times over the course. This has been going on since 1992. But we've enhanced it several times, extended the service into the evening so that the last shift people from retail can get the bus home or make connections to a Bridgeport bus or a New Haven bus. But the frequency during the day is, is something we need to increase. There, there, pre-COVID, there were times when the bus would actually go down the road, pass people who would bang on the bus to get in. The people on the bus would scream at the driver not to let them on because they were so crowded. So hopefully we'll experience that kind, that, that same recovery on, on the ridership. And if we increase the, increase the frequency during the day, we won't have those overcrowding problems.
Thank you, Mr. Chad, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Henry, good evening, Henry, how are you? Did I just understand you to say that the idea here was to go from clean diesel to electric and no intermediary, like a hybrid that New Haven is using? Or will they do something in the interim where you said that the electric is extremely expensive? And I can understand that. But that New Haven has been using that electric hybrid right along now, right?
I believe they have. This, this is the latest and greatest. There's a company in North Carolina that produces, is producing most of their, about 1,000 buses they've produced so far. And they intend on producing 1,000 a year. They're around a million dollars, a million, two per bus. But there's other, other economies there with using electric, A. And how long those buses are going to last, how long those batteries are going to last. They're clean and clean is what, is what the goal is going to be. And again, if, if the policies don't change, we're going to be going to those, everyone's going to be going to those electric buses, electric vans, electric cars. And we'll pretty, after that, we won't have any drivers because they'll all be autonomous.
Right.
Hopefully we have something, give them something else to do. But that's, that's, that's the way the, the country is going. There's no question about it.
The, the path seems clear, but the idea, the footprint of that battery later on, God only knows what, how big a footprint's going to be, even with all our cars, the hybrid and everything else. So thank you for that information, Mr. Jadak, and good luck, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Alderman Marlowe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Henry Jadak, good evening. Just wondering, I know you said that during COVID, obviously, the bus ridership has gone way down and you're experiencing more now. What is your average ridership per day?
Per day, it's about 500 on the fixed route buses. We should, we, during pre-COVID times, it would be somewhere 700, 800. The, and we were about 60%, 65% back from pre-COVID numbers on the buses. The van, the van services was really lagged behind because I think for several reasons, one of which is that people staying home, the virtual doctors, doctor's appointments for elderly. There's people home now working where they, they'll provide transportation for some of their extended families rather than use, use the van services. We had a lot of programs for handicapped children and that, those programs, instead of going from school to, to program, now the programs came to the schools. So they stayed in school and didn't need that transportation that we provide. And again, those numbers are going to come back, but it's going to be a longer, slower process for that, I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as well, if I could just ask another question through you. Henry, what's, as far as the buses go, I mean, what is the average age of your buses? Do you have a program in place to start replacing them?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the better programs that between the state of Connecticut actually has finally fallen in line with a good replacement program because they have to approve our, our grants to the federal transit in respect that they provide 20% of the costs. So we wouldn't be able to get them without that, that program. Every, every year, we, all of us produce a, a long-range program for replacement. And we just received four buses, four 35-foot buses, brand new for the local service. And they were $460,000 apiece. So it's, and they last, those are 12-year buses. They're, they're intended on being used for 12 years or about 600,000 miles. The vans are much less, they're, they're five, they turn to us five-year vehicles. We usually get a few more years out of them. But we're, the fleets, we have nothing less than a, than a six-year-old vehicle here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for the Transit District? Thank you, Henry, for answering all the questions.
My pleasure.
Thank you for the great job you're doing for the city of Milford.
Thank you.
Department on our agenda is the Milford Arts Council. Page.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and for your continued support of the Arts Council. Just to report on some basic information of where we were from last year. Once we shut at our doors in March, middle of March, we worked hard to secure our theater camp, which was running in the summer. It feeds both the MAC and Pantachino, who runs that camp for us, $15,000 per organization. So it was a huge safety net that we were able to continue with that program for the summer and then working off of the grant from the city. We worked hard through the end of our fiscal year. We received the first flow of PPP and we upped our personal donations and generosity from our community by about 60% over budgeted numbers, which was wonderful. We then moved into the summer months and fall. Basically, our fall schedule, which usually kicks in around September, went totally dormant. We held two, we, we held free small events that we called pop-ups all over the city of Milford, just to keep the arts alive, to also benefit our performers who were literally starving for the attention and validation they get through performing all around our city. We then did two large fundraisers in October. We did a fundraising concert in early October. And I just want to be, give a huge shout out to our already very stressed Public Works Department. They were very, very helpful in helping us with getting the Board of Ed staging, safety fencing, electricity, the bathrooms, et cetera. We could not have held it and been as successful as we were without their help. So we just wanted to make that note. The second event in October that we did in partnership with Pantachino was called the Happy Haunts, which was that drive-through event. Again, a big shout out to Public Works and also our Police Department. Jake Craniac and other officers were extremely helpful in helping us secure and keep everybody safe during those two events. During the winter months, we did online classes, which did provide some income and a very large online fundraiser called the Macathon. We hit goal on that. And then we really pushed for new memberships, early renewals and individual donations. And I will say at this point in time that we are at 256% of our budgeted donations, which is an amazing, again, shout out to our community in the belief that the arts are essential and our organization is worthy of staying on. We again got the second wave of PPP grant from the DECD, which was publicly announced. And again, some of our sponsorships came in with additional funds as well. So right now, we are fairly, we feel fairly on good ground moving forward. And we have a couple of things, if I can share my screen, pull up a little calendar. Normally I give you guys our, our calendar and brochure. So this is in place of that. We're starting up pop-ups again. Instead of doing them every Saturday morning, we are doing them once or twice a month. We have some in-person art experiences utilizing the online instructors who created their own little following. And we're doing the sand sculpture contest, which was canceled last year. That's going to be July 18th in Walnut Beach. And our big thing, which I'm going to pull up, is we are going back to the park for a series of concerts. So we have secured four bands, again, once a month, starting in June, followed by a recreation of our successful presentation with Eastbound of Our Town, which we did a couple of years ago all around downtown. So we're really excited about this. We're working really hard to present this and really excited about the expansive audience or able to bring in some of these programs, which we otherwise could not afford to bring to our small space at the MAC. And I just want to end with the report on the MAC itself. We've been renting it. We have a couple of small programs that have been meeting there regularly and utilizing the space for us to return to the MAC in the fall. Right now, we're looking at 50% to 60% of capacity, which means we would only be able to hold an audience to the number of 40 to 60 people. With that, we most likely are not going to be able to successfully run our programming. But we're going to try, we'll raise ticket prices a little bit, providing a safe atmosphere to make people feel comfortable. Again, we're still going through guidelines on whether or not we're going to be having to require taking temperatures or perhaps requiring presentation of the vaccine cards that people have. It's a question that's across the board from the federal level to the state level, to small organizations, whether they're sports arenas or arts organizations, about how we move forward. So we're working as hard as we can. All three of our part-time staff, myself included, were not furloughed. We worked hard. If you follow us on social media, I hopefully you can see that hard work at play. And I think we feel fairly confident that in comparison to a lot of other arts organizations across this state, that we did really, really well. We were one of the hardest working and most successful in keeping ourselves afloat.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to follow up and say that, as you may expect, there was a lot of creativity. The Arts Council was very nimble. They did a lot to adjust to the pandemic times and be creative, offering programs that were socially distanced or were online and virtual. They, they really did a great job trying to continue to offer programming, you know, even while we couldn't come together either at the MAC or some enclosed space. So kudos to Paige and her crew.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or any comments from the other Alderman? Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, I'd like to very much echo Mayor Blake's point. Paige has to give a presentation that summarizes 2020 in about five minutes. And it may not seem like such a big deal, but the Milford Arts Council is such an amazing organization, just always teeming with so much life and energy, providing opportunity to a whole bunch of people of different ages, different walks of life. And what the Milford Arts Council had to go through last year, they were under incredible stress. It was very difficult. Without Paige and her team, they may not have even survived. But because they had to work so hard, because they had to set up all these amazing fundraisers, which took countless hours of work over weeks and weeks. Not only is Paige runs the, the Milford Arts Council, but she's involved in a whole bunch of different organizations across the city. And, and really what they had to go through was nothing short of amazing. And so, you know, Paige, I'd like to just say thank you for everything you did. I know how extremely difficult that it was last year to do all the things that you and your team at the Milford Arts Council had to do. And, and so, you know, obviously I'm in support of the requested funds here. You deserve so much more and just thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. It's appreciated. We had a huge team backing, backing us, lots of volunteers, very, very talented people who offered us a lot of their skills and time or little or no money. Just basically a big, huge thanks and lots of virtual hugs. But thank you. We are celebrating 50 years in 2022. So we didn't, we stopped planning that in last year, March, and we're about to kickstart planning it again. So I think you're stuck with us. The MAC's not going anywhere.
Any more questions for the Arts Council? Seeing none, thank you, Paige, and thank you for reiterate the words from Alderman Smith and the mayor, fantastic job you've done for the city and your council.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. The next department on our agenda is the Human Resources Department. Tanya Barnes, age 41.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, how are you?
Good, thanks.
So this evening, overall, my operating budget is flat. I asked for a total of $1,450 increase in four specific lines. Membership, because our membership costs have gone up. Advertising, because of the number of vacancies that we have due to retirement and so forth. And in some positions, we've had to post numerous times. And then the posting, postage and printing and binding lines, because we have gotten a number, I apologize if there's noise in the background. The custodians are cleaning the floors. There've been a number of mailings that are required through Medicare and so forth that we need to be sending out. And, and so those, those have just been something that we need to take on. And so for the cost of printing and postage, to ensure that we cover those, that was where I asked for those increases.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, there, there was one salary adjustment in this budget this year, and it was. Mr. Chairman, there was one salary adjustment in this budget this year, and it was in this department. As you know, a few years back, this department was changed from a personnel department to a whole different animal, a human resources department that took the lead on things like contract negotiations. They took over a whole host of other items like the information services that used to be housed with finance and some pension and post-retirement benefits that they then took on. The department has changed a lot. And one of the thing that was striking that I received a lot of feedback from, from other departments was the salary for the director position. One of the lowest ones that we had in the city for a for a department head. And we took a look at some of the surrounding communities, and not only was it lower, significantly lower than, you know, all the surrounding communities HR heads, but it was lower than surrounding communities like Fairfield, like Stratford, like Trumbull, their assistant HR directors. So you'll see that this position was moved up to the same grade as the Assistant Public Works Director position, which is another comparable grade and step that you've had before you in the budget. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But that's one of the things that you may or may not notice as you're going through this budget. And overall, this department is relatively flat, other than that. And I think if you look at all the other departments, that's really the only adjustment we made, and it's because there was such a a striking or glaring, I guess, need in comparison to surrounding communities and the fact that a lot of other non-department head positions, their salary grade was more than this position. And still is, quite frankly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification. Any aldermen have any questions? Or Tanya? Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, this was the department I was alluding to when we were discussing the Borough of Woodmont. And I think the mayor has preemptively answered some of my questions, so thank you for that. So I just would like to know, is this a position, and you mentioned other municipalities, and I've mentioned in the past, highly fond of comparing us to other municipalities, because you can always find one where, you know, our building inspection fees are lower, so we should increase them, or we should increase this because we don't match another municipality. So I never really liked the comparison model, but I understand that we do that on occasion. But I just am wondering, since you had indicated that this is a position that is less than other municipalities, significantly less in some circumstances, should we expect an increase like this, similar to this next year? Or potentially the year after?
No, I don't believe so. This would be at the top of the range for this, for this level, the same as the Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you. And again, this, I probably should have prefaced this, but I know that the Human Resources Department does an excellent job. And Ms. Barnes, I know you do as well. So this may just be for educational purposes. And so I'm just wondering, can we, can we then expect, you know, this is about a 15% increase, which is substantial. And I know when there was an employee in the mayor's office that had about a 10% increase, there was a number of people on this board that that just asked some questions just for our general informational purposes. So can we expect other increases, like 15% increases in many of the other departments? Because I'm sure that there are other departments and other heads of departments where their salaries are significantly lower than other municipalities. So can we expect a similar increase across a number of our departments?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Smith, this is the only position, as I mentioned before, in this budget that there was an adjustment for.
Thank you. If I can just ask another question, Mr. Chairman, through you. I guess my question is other departments, are you constantly comparing the salaries of many of our department heads to other municipalities? When determining when to increase or decrease for salary purposes?
It's something that's considered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing further.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi, Tanya.
Hello.
How are you doing? Listen, I don't know if it's omission or what, but I'm budgets from other departments and the capital outlay that you're asking for for file cabinet office chair, there seems to be no dollar amount to it. So is that just an omission or? You're not getting?
No, no, no. I'm looking at my budget and there's just a dollar. No, we didn't ask for any capital outlay at all, and the computers have now been consolidated under the MIS department. So if there are any computer needs, that would come through that department.
But there's a file cabinet in an office chair?
Yes, but I didn't request any cabinets or chairs, but we normally put a dollar sign there as a
Mr. Chairman, through you, they put that in as a placeholder so that if there was a need that came up for either of those items, and again, it was a carryover from last year as a placeholder, it allows the Finance Department to do a budget memo transfer, which would come before your board. So as you can see, under the capital outlays, there's a total of $2, which means that anything over $2 would need to come in the form of an allocation transfer or a budget memo transfer. Both of those two types of transfers would require Board of Aldermen approval. So any type of purchase of an office chair or purchase of a filing cabinet would require you to review that and consider that and act on it.
Thank you. But I also would consider the fact that in the, if you're looking for a file cabinet and an office chair, obviously in a capital outlay, I don't look at needing a placeholder. It's just a capital outlay for that particular budget for that particular year. So that's very confusing there as a placeholder. I can see placeholders in every other operational expenses and personnel services, but I don't see it in a capital outlay because capital outlay goes year to year. So thank you.
And just to clarify that, you need to have the placeholder or you cannot transfer any money into that account, even with a Board of Aldermen budget memo transfer. That's required so that if a chair, while it may not be anticipated, now if a chair breaks or if a filing cabinet breaks and it's critical to the mission on an emergency basis, that is the only way that that could be purchased under these accounts. If it got zeroed out, it could not be purchased under this account. There'd have to be another way to finance it.
Right, but other departments too could have the same, you know, could have the same need that if a chair breaks or a file cabinet is needed, that they would had to have already accounted for it so that they could have a placeholder there. So, you know, in emergency situations, emergency tactics need to be accomplished. So that's, it's a very odd situation. It's a capital outlay. You're anticipating a chair. You didn't really want a chair, but if it breaks, you want to buy a chair, you know? Okay, fuck, I see. Thank you.
Any other aldermen have any questions for Human Services? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Person, Mr. Vitro, to Ms. Barnes. I'd like to go back to the salary and the employment issue and to Alderman Smith's comments about your performance and how you're held and hired on in this city. I'd like to reiterate that. But I want to remind the board, some of our discussions from years ago at Budget teeter on other things, and some of them are very good. In 218, we had a discussion about salaries and ratio, and we talked about recommending a study or a commission or some way to look at salaries and job descriptions descriptions across the board. And we talked about gender impact because most of the job descriptions that have been enhanced. It went from a personnel department to a department that changes people's lives. I was struck the other night, for instance, when Superintendent Ketea mentioned the savings in the pension and the benefit contribution. I think that comes from this new responsibility that the Human Resources has had in the past three or four years. Is that not correct, those savings to other areas, right? And yet they counted them as their particular saving of 1 million, unless I'm mistaken. But anyway, the point is, in management circles, we don't want to compare. Police chief in the next town makes this much, ours should make that much. That's a comparison. But benchmarking is done. And when we used to criticize the Board of Ed and the stats that we had in Milford for our schools before they improved greatly, people used to ask, well, look at Cheshire's scores. Cheshire wasn't a comparable town. It wasn't a benchmark town. That's a principle. I disagree with Alderman Smith. That is used. You do compare, but not compare or direct, direct. You look for a comparable place with the same responsibilities, the same number of employees, the amount of budget. It's an enormous job. So I don't think that the Board of Alders can anticipate that there won't be salary increases going down the road and asking for that guarantee or thinking that we're just looking at the neighbors and wanting to keep up with the Joneses, rather than that we have a responsibility to look at job descriptions and parity. Seems to me that the salary of a Director of Human Resources in this town would be more comparable to the other directorships, even more so maybe than the Assistant Director. That's not my call, but at least it's on, I can be the Greek chorus and say we should have the discussion. But I don't want to dismiss the possibility. I think we have an obligation to look at parity across departments, and I also think we have a responsibility to use benchmarking as a tool to do it. Thanks.
Any more questions for Human Resources? Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi, Tanya. First, thank you for all the work that you do. My question is, is overall in the city, how many, how many positions are unfilled right now? And how is response to those positions? Are we getting the quality people that you're seeking?
I believe from my last vacancy report, without counting police and fire, I exclude those since they do do their own recruitment. We have about 39 vacancies. And it varies by position. Sometimes when we have in a need of more skilled personnel that require licenses or some type of technical skill, we may need to repost a few times. When we post for Clerk A's entry-level positions or entry-level positions in Public Works, we get many, many candidates and applicants. In January, we ran a Clerk A exam and we had 108 applicants. So it kind of varies, but some positions we do have a more difficult time filling when they are niche positions.
Sure, sure. So do you see overall, though, that people are looking to work for the city of Milford, I guess, should be my question? Is it the environment is something where they say, wow, wait, you know, this is the place I want to be?
Absolutely. I mean, as a city, we, we do, I think we're a very attractive employer. And we have many benefits that employees do seek. And one of the things is quality of life and balance. So I do see us as a very attractive employer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Tanya. Tanya, you indicate the fact that there's 39 vacancies. And when we look at the vacancies within the budgets or the departments, we find the fact that there's a number after them. And does that number include Benny's benefits or just, is that just salaries?
That's just salaries.
Okay, can you, I don't know if it's your question to you or to Peter or DC, can you equate that to a number? And what the total number of salaries would balance the bottom line of the budget? I don't know if I'm clear. 39 positions equal.
And I would say I would defer to Peter in terms of the cost of the insurance piece. And it's
So I'm looking for a total number that equates to the 39 positions. Peter, to you.
To you, Mr. Chair. We could probably first get the, I'm assuming you're not asking for the salary impact because we can add up the base salaries for those 39 positions to get the the cost of in total for salary.
Right, I'm looking for salaries and whatever is listed there. Yeah. Is there a number that you can give me, please?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Mrs. Barnes has that on the vacancy report, if perhaps on the I can try to find the spreadsheet myself.
Unfortunately, I don't have a total in terms of all the salaries cumulative. I just have per line. And it doesn't account for the cost of the benefits as well with it. I'm certainly happy to provide it.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, please, Tanya ASAP, just the cumulative number of that monetary amount that goes along with the 39 vacancies, please.
Sure.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Any more questions for the Human Resources? Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, just to Ms. Barnes. Those vacancies, I know you don't have the exact figure. Is there a way that you can give us an approximation? Are we talking about, you know, 500,000? Are we talking about, you know, 10 million? I mean, what range are we talking about? An approximate value?
Oh, gosh. Looking at the salaries just in general and seeing that there are 39, I would definitely say that it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I don't have an exact number for you.
Okay, and if those positions are unfilled but budgeted for, can the money that budgeted for be used for something other than those positions?
Mr. Chairman, through you, just because I may be best positioned to answer this question. As you know, those salaries in the Personnel Services brackets can be transferred administratively by the department head with administrative sign-off into overtime budgets or anything within the Personal Services bracket. That's how it's always been. That's how our charter reads. And that normally happens so that if there are some vacancies, which there always is, you know, 39 positions may be different tomorrow. It may be different the day after that, just because there's a constant, you know, when you have overall the city of Milford, not just on the city side, but on the Board of Ed side too, you have over 2,000 people working for the city. There's always going to be retirements. There's always going to be new people that are being hired on a daily basis. I think probably Tanya has extended a couple of offers, you know, recently that will, will probably be filled within the next couple of days. So that 39 open vacancy report may adjust by tomorrow or the next day. You know, there may be retirements coming down the pike over the next couple of weeks or certainly before the end of the fiscal year. So there's going to be adjustments and there always is. But one of the ways that the city accounts for any type of open position is that you can utilize money out of regular wages for those open positions in things like overtime. Or what we do often is we temporarily fill those positions with a seasonal temporary. And we utilize that money until we can hire a, you know, a full-time replacement that, you know, that particular department is comfortable with. Sometimes there's almost a training ground to make sure that we're getting the right fit for the right department with some of the seasonal temporary staff that we have. And each of those departments or most departments have those additional line items as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess it would just, I guess it's just a little surprising, maybe surprising to some people that, you know, we can budget out hundreds of thousands, possibly even millions. I mean, we don't know the number for a position that's unfilled that can be used for something wholly unrelated to that position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I did find an estimate for the board, we did have a snapshot that I believe that Tanya had provided at the end of at the end of January, beginning of February with the thirty-seven vacancies. If you added the police at that time, I believe the number was fifty-eight and the total of the base salaries was close to three million dollars. If you take out police and fire, that's about a million dollars. So I would estimate the thirty-seven vacancies could be upwards of two million.
Thank you, Peter. Alderman Gennettazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Tanya. My question is, in regards to the, I guess it's thirty-nine present vacancies, would you be able to tell the members of the board where the majority of those vacancies are, where they lie? I'm assuming, but I'm not, I'm not really a hundred percent sure. Are most of them in the Public Works Department?
Yes.
So.
The bulk of them are.
Well, they all are?
No, I said a bulk of the positions are in Public Works.
Okay. And some of them, are they actively being advertised to fill? Because, or are they just kind of stagnant?
No, we are actively recruiting for many of them, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that, I believe for every single one of the open positions, I believe we have signed job recs for those. So, you know, whenever there is an opening, absent some reason or some basis, you know, the process of hiring starts pretty soon. I can't think of any positions right now that we are, you know, not actively recruiting on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tanya, for answering all of our questions. And again, thank you for the great work you do for the city.
Thank you very much. I have two more.
Oh, you do?
For the Pension Board and Civil Service Commission. Were they not on the list? Their status quo, there were no increases.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, Tanya.
So much.
Wasn't on my list, but thank you for giving us that information.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Thank you again. The next department on our agenda is Bridges Community Healthcare Incorporated, page eighty-nine, Jennifer Fiorello.
Yes.
Jen?
Good evening, Chairman Vetro, Mayor Blank, and distinguished members of the board. I'm Jennifer Fiorello, Bridges Healthcare, and I'm here with my Chief Financial Officer, Carlos Rodriguez. I just want to thank you for this time to speak on behalf of our budget request of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is level over last year. And thank you for your continued support over the years. The funding is vital for us because the gap between our program service fees and grants oftentimes leaves us to have to absorb costs and these funds help us to bridge that gap. I did email some information to you prior to our meeting that outlined our 2020 accomplishments in our annual report and an executive summary of COVID relief dollars that we received. As you probably could imagine, the last year has been filled with challenges and exciting developments for us. We were very lucky to receive COVID relief dollars to pay for modifications to space, PPE, cleaning and infrastructure for telehealth. When the pandemic hit, we were forced to provide all of our clinical and case management services using telehealth. And within a week, we were able to deploy the appropriate infrastructure to do that and successfully continue to meet the mental health and substance use needs of those we serve in Milford, Orange, West Haven and surrounding communities. We have seen an increase in symptoms of loneliness and depression as well as in utilization of our mobile crisis service. So fast forward one year and we're now gradually working toward reentry efforts and asking staff to work on site and provide more face-to-face services through groups or intensive outpatient programs and limited in-person case management services for those with the highest needs and risks. The good news is in 2020, there were a number of new developments and several new projects that we did embark on to expand our services in the catchment area and increase access for more underserved populations. So through a federal grant, we've been able to create an intensive community-based treatment model called Assertive Community Treatment, targeting the highest risk and most clinically complex individuals. And we also renovated a space in West Haven, Adult and Child Clinical Services. Our crisis service has also been expanded to include mobile visits during the overnight hours instead of only telephonic access. In addition, we have expanded our prevention efforts through increased funding from the federal government to target underage drinking and drug use in Milford, West Haven, Orange, Bethany and Woodbridge. And then finally, our mobile medication assisted treatment van continues to offer immediate access to treatment for opioid addiction. The van parks in Milford at the Bethel Shelter, the West Haven Green, and now in New Haven at the Green. Bridges does continue to serve over thirteen hundred Milford residents on an annual basis and even more through our prevention efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Is there any questions from the board to Bridges Community Healthcare? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jen, hi. Jen, I know you had, you had given us and sent us an executive summary. And there were three items that were highlighted. And it said the return to Department of Health, meaning that money was, needs to be, or is it, or has it been returned already? I guess that's the question first. Has it been returned? Or are you still in the process of returning the money?
That, that will be returned.
Will be returned.
I'm sorry.
Is there any possibility that those grants will be forgiven?
No. And Carlos.
So you, you have to return that money to those? Okay.
So there are multiple different types of pots of money that we received. Some were provider relief funds and those were from the Health and Human Services Department. And under the assumption that we were going to have a substantial loss in our program service fees because of COVID. But because we didn't, even though they gave us that, those dollars, we will be giving those back because we didn't have a large significant loss in our program service fees this year. So that's hot. And then we had a pot of money from Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services to cover most of our PPE and our infrastructure. That's been fully utilized. And Carlos, if you want to speak more, Carlos is here, I could talk more about the COVID relief funds we did receive.
Yes, the DMAS COVID relief funds, there was clear stipulations as to how those dollars were to be used. It was specific for COVID-related infrastructure expenses, all of the things that Jennifer went over at the beginning that we had to, to implement our telehealth services. The HHS, it was more for provider relief funds, it's for agencies or that provide Medicare, Medicare payments. And it was like Jen said, under the assumption that there was going to be a loss of revenue. The good news is that the state was very proactive and just as quickly as we were able to implement our telehealth services, they were just as quickly able to create legislation so that we could get paid for these services. So there was really little to no lag in our reimbursement services. We were able to implement our services via telehealth and we still are doing most of those services via telehealth and able to get reimbursed for most of those, pretty much all of those services via telehealth. So the expectation is that if there is no drop off on revenue, is that we're probably going to have to return those dollars. And the other thing is that we also have the Patriot Protection Program that we have. So that will probably also be expense first. We're working with our CPA firm to navigate that and and see how we can utilize those dollars. But again, the HHS is probably almost a hundred percent that we'll probably have to return those dollars.
Okay, thank you. And again, I thank you, Bridges obviously has been an integral part of this community for many, many, many years, sixty years, whatever. But the point would be the, the idea is that I like to thank you personally as a public official. And even though I'm part of Bridges and been a part of Bridges for a long time, I'd like to thank you for the work you do. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a point of information, I know, I know Justin is listening. I know Jennifer had a very difficult time getting the information to all of us through the email and because of exchange, and it's not very clear. I think we need to work that out. I don't think we can do it now. But maybe Justin can get on it as far as that exchange email where it's supposed to come over to our own emails. We weren't doing that. So there must be a glitch in something. So hopefully that can be resolved pretty soon. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board for Bridges? I don't see any. So I want to thank you, Jen, for all your information. Carlos, thank you for all the information you gave to the board and thank you for all the good work you do.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. The next department on the agenda is the Police Department. Page forty-three. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Am I muted? I'm not muted, am I?
No, you're on.
Okay, great. Well, good evening. This year's budget, due to the impact of COVID, we expect to return about a million dollars in unused funds and and approximately a million dollars, give or take, in unused funds. And that's a result of the impact COVID had, not just on this current budget, but on the latter half of the prior fiscal year's budget and specifically in the overtime accounts. During the lockdown phase, their crime had been reduced, our calls for services went way down. We responded to a lot of things via phone as opposed to actually going out on calls. And police officers weren't taking vacations, so we didn't spend all that money hiring back officers to fill vacancies. And as you know, that we're required to do by the contract and it just certainly makes sense to do that. So we had a considerable, we spent considerably less overtime in all the overtime accounts. In fact, we normally run out of overtime money, as you may recall, in January or February. By department, our size and our complexity, we spent about a million dollars, which is still, and you start looking around, as you've been talking about earlier, you'll see that that's less than most of our agencies of similar size and complexity. Nevertheless, we'll still have a deficit of about a hundred and ten thousand, which is considerably less than what we've had in the past, with the exception of last year because that was COVID impacted. The holiday account, as we know, and I tell you this every year, it's underfunded by this year about a hundred and sixty-three thousand. But we'll return some money in training. We weren't able to train. We certainly weren't able to hire because the training academies are closed. As a result, we had a number of openings. We have, as of March, excuse me, as of April fifteenth, we have hired our nine people. So we are up to full strength once again and they are in the academy. However, it'll be ten months before they see their first call because they're in the, in the training environment. Also in this budget, there's a couple of things that have occurred involving policing, some of which you'll see in the budget, some of which you won't. And that is the Police Accountability Bill, Public Act twenty-one. And there's approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new mandated costs that were part of that legislation, as I'm sure many of you know. However, you only see about twenty-one, you're only going to see twenty-one thousand of that in the budget. And those are items for psychological assessments, mandated psychological assessments of police officers and mandated drug testing of police officers. The other items, the additional training requirements and the the car cameras, excuse me, the dashboard cameras. And if you recall, we had dashboard cameras years ago, but we didn't maintain the infrastructure. It got to be very pricey. And we had the body cam, so we felt that that was sufficient. So we let that go, but we're required now to have body cams as well. So that's a two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar cost as well, as well. Those, those last two are coming out of the private duty training account or private duty account. That twenty-two hundred and twenty-two thousand that you'll see, and I believe it's twenty-two thousand or thereabouts, that you'll see in the budget, two hundred and fifty-two, excuse me, two hundred and fifty-two, nine, that you're seeing the budget, we should get thirty percent of that reimbursed, which is part of the legislation and there should be reimbursement on that. So we'll get some of that coming back. But those are the differences in the accounts. It's probably obvious, but we have to make up those trainings that we didn't do last year. We have in this state, contrary to what you may hear in other states, we have a considerable state mandates in terms of training that every officer has to go through. We weren't able to do that last year. We have to make up those mandates. There's about seventy-five thousand dollars in just new training as part of the Police Accountability Bill that, excuse me, that, that all police department, this police department will have to undergo. And we'll have to make up some of the training that we missed. So we'll see a considerable jump. You won't see it in the budget. We'll look to take that money from the private duty accounts, which are actually getting very thin compared to years past. And with that, be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the board, one of the things that you will see that's different in this account is we zeroed out the cruisers line item. Last year, we started a, I don't know why I say a new tradition, but we've moved that over to the Vehicle Acquisition Program. Back about fourteen, fifteen years ago, all of the equipment and vehicles in the city really operated out of the operational budget. And about fourteen, fifteen years ago, that program, which was, I guess, adjusted and went from the rolling stock program to the Vehicle Acquisition Program. The one remaining department, I think, that really included it still was the police. And we've included them now in the Vehicle Acquisition Program. So the chief sent me a list of vehicles that he would like to purchase for this year. And we had the discussion that sometime either in June or July, whenever we take up the Vehicle Acquisition Program and use that allocation transfer, we will include the police cruisers, just like we did the last year. But to the chief's point, the Police Department had a challenging year as did a lot of different departments in the city, and they really did rise to the challenge amidst a lot of turmoil, a lot of adjustments from the pandemic and from a whole host of other things. So kudos to the chief and to our officers who continue to serve the city well and keep us safe.
Mayor, can I just add to that? And thank you for that. I appreciate your words. The, you know, I have the benefit of being here for a long time. And so I remember when it went from the rolling stock to the vehicle acquisition account. And so one of the things that we did with the vehicle acquisition account, if you look back in the record, is the Police Department always got two to three cars a year that were admin cars or detective cars or specialty cars. And then, as you said, the cruisers were in the budget, which have now been rolled to that that vehicle acquisition account. And we took care of that today, as you mentioned. So what you haven't seen in years is where do we get the money to buy motorcycles? Where do we get the money to buy specialty vehicles and admin vehicles and detective vehicles and undercover vehicles? We do that through the private duty account. And so that's what we've been using that money for some of those surpluses to, instead of getting those out of the vehicle acquisition account.
Does any Alderman have any questions for the chief? Alderman Win Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Chief Mello. Chief Mello, thank you for all your hard work on the budget. As always, every year, we always do appreciate that. As you probably recall, I've been a big proponent of continuing the discussion regarding the new police headquarters. And then I have discussed it at the last two capital improvement plan meetings. And as you probably also recall, the last capital improvement plan meeting this year, we actually increased the allotted amount for the new police headquarters, which was in the capital improvement plan through amendment. So my question is, has there been any new discussion as to a new police headquarters? Or if there has not been, will there be in the not-too-distant future?
Alderman Smith, I have not had any meaningful discussions with anyone regarding the new police department. We have discussed some of the modifications that we need to make to the existing building to get by in the interim. I mean, I know we still have the land and I know that you folks have been talking about it. But my work was done and less than until I hear from you folks or from the mayor to reengage. They're just, right now, I'm trying to focus on what do we need within the existing facility to continue the operation.
Understood. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Chief Mello. First, thank you for all the work that you and the police department does, not only through this past year, but all the time. I think we focused too much on this past year, and you guys do a great job, no matter what the time is. And I have just a couple of questions. One's an account question, and if you could just, I mean, it sounds like it should be self-explanatory, but the body worn camera storage for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I just need to know, is that as simple as it sounds?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is that as simple as it sounds?
Well, yes and no. It's, so the body worn cameras, just like now, the dashboard cameras, which we'll purchase this year, there's a storage piece to that, and that's very expensive. And so we use cloud storage. So we, our body cameras are on almost all the time. In fact, I, we, I may be making the officer at the desk where a body camera and you know, we've had body cameras. We were one of the first two departments in the state twelve years ago, when they were on your glasses and they had a piece of wire. Because we've always maintained them, and they've done some, been a great help for us. So when the cameras come in, they automatically, they get put in a docking station, they automatically download, and every officer has one. All that data goes into a storage system, and it's not just the cloud storage that's important. It's the backend software that puts those those, that, those video, that puts that video, excuse me, and it allows us to categorize it and place it in different places. Because different categories of video require different lengths of storage. Some need to be attached to a record, like investigative record, something to be shared by the court. There's another piece that when the public requests that, that they have to be reviewed in real time and material has to be redacted, because some of the stuff is exempt. And we view those, all of us have the opportunity to look at those. We have a process where certainly all, we have this, you know, for many years now, all uses of force, no matter how minor, go through a review. We do training reviews, we do random reviews. So that that backend piece is really important, because I know there's been talk, well, why don't we just, you know, buy a large, a server with some large storage space? And that isn't enough, because we need to be able to catalog this stuff and put this on some sort of deletion rotation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What other question for you, Chief Mello, is you had started by saying that you were able to during COVID do some alternate ways of doing things, you know, phone calls, you had said, instead of personal visits and such. Do you see from from that experience that you'll be able to carry any of those ideas over and use that as the permanent way of doing stuff that may help you save your overtime account?
No, I don't think so, Alderman Marlowe. And the reason being is, what we did is those were calls that were, that didn't require the presence of a police officer. So we, if we were just going to take a report. And so the benefit of having an officer out there is the officer's out there patrolling your neighborhood and making sure that, and it has to do with response times and cover for officers, and people want to see a person when they call. There may still be some calls that we could do internally, but there's no reason to do that if the officers are going to be in the field as well. So when I said reduced cost, we didn't need as many people in the field, because there wasn't really anyone on the road. There wasn't a lot happening. So it was a different time.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions for the police department? Alderman Gainer. Alderman Gainer, I think you're muted.
I am. Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I see that there's a line item, personal chemical protective equipment that you had requested, about ninety-two thousand, but that wasn't carried over. What's, what will be the impact for the officers or your safety if this is not filled?
Well, that's an artifact from the nine eleven days, and that was when the federal government provided police officers protective gear and protective masks. Now, interesting, last summer, when we were expecting protests, we didn't have filters for the masks. And so we had to go around and borrow those from other departments. And so while I've told you in the past that we didn't need those, you know, unfortunately, last year was a unique situation. Hopefully, we won't see a situation like that again. I put that in there because that equipment does exist. But when we start to cut back, I think it's the first thing that we cut back, because if we look at the probabilities instead of the possibilities, that that would be the first item to go. I think what we will do, and what we had discussed last year or last summer, is that we should look to, instead of replacing suits, just replacing filters. And so that's, that's our goal.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the aldermen for the police department? I don't see any, Chief.
Thank you.
I certainly want to extend my thanks to you and your staff for all the great work you've done over the years, not just this past year. I miss going to your meetings. I miss listening to all the heroic acts that your police do on a regular basis, that the public just doesn't get a chance to hear. It's a shame, because the community would be very impressed after hearing some of the things that our police department deals with on a regular basis. But your staff and and all the men at their end department have to be very, very well commended for all the work that they do. Thanks again.
Thank you. I appreciate your words. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. The next department on our agenda is the animal control. Scott Ellingson. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. This is Scott with, Scott Ellingson with Animal Control. For the budget, I'm just maintaining, I'm not asking for any increases or anything.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board for the animal control? Seeing none. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening. The next department is Public Library. Chris Angeli, how are you, Chris?
Hi, good. Thank you very much. It's very nice to see everybody here, albeit virtually. I do also want to thank you for making an accommodation to my change in presentation from last week. I do appreciate your flexibility. I will keep my remarks brief. As with every other department, this year has been challenging in terms of providing our usual services, but library staff very quickly adapted, and we introduced new services such as digital access cards, curbside pickup, chat reference, virtual programs. And we increased and made more accessible all of our e-content. Those are services that our patrons have now come to appreciate and depend on, and our intent is to keep those available even as we come out of our pandemic restrictions. The budget request this year is flat. We have accommodated contractual increases by making adjustments in other line items. Other than our staffing, our largest funding request support a membership in the Bibliomation Consortium, our book, media, and e-content purchases, and our other online subscriptions such as ancestry.com, New York Times, Job Now, and Reference USA. Just for a little background on our Bibliomation membership, that is our library consortium that allows us to circulate materials, catalog materials. It allows Milford residents access to over five million items at member libraries, over twenty thousand ebooks, e-audiobooks, and magazines. It provides us cost savings in bibliographic data and cataloging, discounts in materials and supplies. And in this coming year, Bibliomation staff will also be taking over the majority of the technology needs of the library. We did have a brief closure. We closed to the public last March. We reopened for curbside service on May eighteenth and opened to the public in June. And even with our, that closure, the reduced hours, and our ongoing renovation project in our children's department that is now finished, our circulation pretty much stayed flat, with just a very slight decrease. Our circulation of our e-content went up over seventy-five percent. Usage of our online databases, especially our job search databases, also greatly increased. And I just really, if I could just indulge, if you could indulge me, and I just want to take a moment to really thank my staff publicly for really being able to pivot from our library services, which are really in-person, hands-on services, to providing them so successfully remotely despite all of the COVID restrictions. We currently have twenty-seven thousand registered cardholders. Four thousand of them are new since our closure in March. We saw a great push for people looking for materials, information, and things to do once they were home. So four thousand new users since March. And one thing I usually am a risk in doing, and I'm reminded to, is I'd also like to recognize the support of our friends of the library. They are an independent five oh one C three organization. They are not a city department or a city grantee. But they have been unwavering in their vocal support and financial support of the library, and I just wanted to publicly thank them as well. So I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I do want to just compliment our library. In these tough times, they were able to make those adjustments, offer some of those critical things, which during a pandemic, people really, really relied upon. Also, for those of you who have not yet seen the newly renovated children's library, it's fantastic. It's fresh and clean. It doesn't have some of the couches and the play areas that I think are to come. Once the pandemic has subsided a little bit more, I know that some additional play space will be introduced or furniture and fixtures will be introduced to make it look a little bit more homey, a little bit more rich. But right now, it is, you know, fresh and clean and really does look, you know, bright and appealing.
Thank you, Mayor Blake. I couldn't agree with you more. Many of the adjustments to our building have been in the physical sense, not just in the new children's space, but on the upper level as well, so that we could accommodate all of the COVID precautions that we need to take to keep our users and our staff safe.
Any more? Alderman, have any questions for Jane, for the? Alderman Marlowe.
Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, Christine, more of a comment than anything else. Christine, I just wanted to commend you and your leadership at the library for the work that you've done there. The renovations have turned out great. And I'm sure that the building, as soon as the restrictions lift up a little bit more, that that building's going to be filled, and the people are really going to enjoy the library. And I have the opportunity, along with Alderman Frank Smith, to sit in on, as the Alderman representatives on the board. And you have an amazing board of people that they're very dedicated to the library and really put a lot of time into it. So more comment than anything else, just wanted to thank you for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just echo Alderman Marlowe's remarks as a, the other liaison to the public library. I say it every year, and I'll say it again this year. I always, whenever I go to pay my taxes, I always remind myself that I've got the public library. It all seems kind of worthwhile. It's a great, it's a, it's a great amenity for our community. And in times like this, as Chris just mentioned, people seek that kind of communication, that kind of community that the public library provides. And Chris did go into some of the highlights, I guess, the most, the most conspicuous accomplishment, of which there are many this year, is the completion of the children's library, which I originally compared to raising a barn in a hurricane. You know, in this time of pestilence, to get those kind of things done. I think Chris was quick to admit, said, well, actually, it made things a little easier, because we had less traffic in the early days. But then again, there were so many adjustments that had to be made, and there were so many things that were different with lesser staff doing things remotely. If I could, Mr. Chairman, as I do every year, just a couple of other things, I think they've all been touched on. But there's been a new book returned that was sent up. We started issuing digital library cards, those who wanted them but couldn't enter the building. A Zoom account was established, so we could do all of this. We, library purchased a program that'll enable digitizing parts of our local history collection. The Maker Space also uses a three-day printer in the brain station to print out PPE materials for various organizations related to the pandemic. In addition to the renovation, the children's room upstairs, a local history room was renovated. Two meeting rooms are created, and the library office was renovated and reorganized. And then, of course, on March eighth, we had the grand opening of the beautiful new children's room, which is probably one of the most significant accomplishments and changes and updates to the library since it was built. We were also quarantining books in the beginning, as required by the state, and the passport office has also just recently been reopened. Chris also served on the committee to help our new poet laureate, Joan Quang Glass. And Toby Zabinski helped me with this, is a member of the library board, led by Linda Winoski, who do just a yeoman's job and very dedicated, very concerned, and engaged with the library. As Chris mentioned, the library couldn't exist as we know it now without the Friends of the Library. And I'd be remiss if we didn't mention names of a couple of staff members who helped to move, physically move the children's book collection from storage in and out, and those are Suzanne Harrison-Thomas, Ashley Hemming, Nicole Greco, Danielle Valenzano, and the history collection was also physically transported back and forth, the materials in it by Diane Priest. So we want to mention, mention them. These are staff members that went above and beyond the call of duty. It makes our library one of the best libraries in the state, if not in the country. And I congratulate Chris and Nancy Abbey and all of the other, the new children's department librarian for the great job they did in this, the winter of our discontent. So congratulations to everybody at the library, and thank you for all you do, as all of, all the departments have had to adapt this year. But I don't think a lot of people took into account the fact that it's like some of the, some of the social services. It's when things are worse that the demand is greatest, and they certainly rose to the occasion and exceeded everyone's expectations. And I, for one, appreciate it, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more comments from the, or questions from the rest of the board for the Mike Library? I don't see any. So thank you again, Chris. Reiterate all the great comments that were given to you, and I'm sure you deserve every bit of it. Thank you for the job you've done for the city of Milford.
Thank you very much for your time.
The next department on our agenda is the probate court, page twenty-six, Judge Beverly Streik Kafalas. Good evening, Beverly.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight? Thank you for the opportunity, once again, to present the municipal portion of the Milford Orange probate budget. It reflects a nominal increase of five hundred and sixty-nine dollars for increased postage and laser fishing expenditures. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions from any board member for the probate court? I do not see any. Who's that? Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Your Honor, Judge Beverly Streik Kafalas. Your Honor, I don't think I or we collectively as a board have thanked you for your years of service, well, now over two decades of service. I know you were appointed as the probate court administrator back in twenty nineteen, but I would just like to commend you and your staff, who are absolutely exceptional for your two, over two decades of service. I know we always enjoy the presentations you give us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for the probate judge? I don't see any. So thank you for your presentation, Judge Beverly, and thank you for your attending our meeting and answering any questions we may have. I think.
Mr. Chairman, I do think that this is Judge Beverly's last official budget with us. She did note with the governor's office, and the governor sent a press release earlier that as of December thirty-first, she will be stepping down as her role as Milford Orange's probate judge, but will continue to lead our state as the administrator for the entire probate court system. So. So we will still continue to see her around town and certainly feel her presence in the probate system. But I believe that this is the last time that she will be before us with a budget presentation. So thank you, Judge Beverly, for your, you know, many years of service to this community.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It will be my last presentation in my official capacity before the Board of Aldermen. And thank you for the years of support the Board of Alders has always given to the probate court system.
You're welcome. So is there is there's no other questions? We'll close under probate court and open under the council on aging. Thank you, Judge Beverly. Have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Aldermen, Mayor Blake and guests. This is Leonora Rodriguez, Executive Director of the Milford Senior Center. Tonight I'm going to share just a brief outline of the activities of the Milford Senior Center. First off, our budget this year is flat as it was the year before. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the presence of Phyllis Leggett, who is our accounting coordinator for the Milford Senior Center. I would also like to publicly recognize the work of Fly Mora, Sean Bennett, and Brian, who is our city painter of the Public Works Department. They have worked with the senior center throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic to really improve and complete projects of the center such as patching and repainting of the full interior, floor repairs, and have been very timely with all of our requests. So thank you to that team. They have been fantastic. They've been partners with our center and it is very much appreciated. So just to go over a little bit of the activities of the center in this past year of COVID, under food services, which is our mini lunch program, we served approximately fifty three thousand meals since March twenty twenty. This is about a hundred and sixty eight percent increase. It's an incredible amount of folks that we've been assisting during this past year. We've actually temporarily moved to meals by donation to ease the stress of our senior members who are income limited. We also gave out holiday treats for our membership and our seniors such as baking apple pies, cookies, Valentine Day candy, cupcakes, just to really cheer on the folks and and make that sense of isolation a little bit less. With our errands program, the program returned as a part time, limited cohort size in September of twenty twenty. We continue to provide socially distant activities for members and rested for family caregivers. Once again, the fees with this was temporarily suspended due to the program restrictions because of COVID nineteen. Under programming, we've created an incredible three-pronged approach in our senior center programs and activities that we hope that we can continue for the foreseeable future, which would be having in-person programs, virtual programs and outdoor programs. We've also had a upgrade to our technology needs with several of the COVID-related grants that that's really helped. In terms of our food bank, due to the outpouring of support from the Milford community members, businesses, organizations, anyone in need of the food bank has been able to receive food mainly done in curbside stance. Since last year, we have provided over twenty two thousand pounds of food distributed, as I said, through curbside delivery as well as some emergency deliveries. We've also been able to start a new fresh food option for folks who are in need. And we've also provided countless bags of food during five of food incentives and two days of fresh foods, fresh foods through a drive-through market that we had just earlier on a couple, a couple of months ago now. Transportation, our vehicles have been outfitted with sneeze guards to protect passengers and our drivers. Our drivers have converted from transporting people in-house to delivering food. That resulted in about ten thousand miles of delivered meals all over town to support our residents and needs. In social services, we placed in twenty twenty probably well over two thousand calls to reach out to our members. We've also partnered with agencies such as Bridges Healthcare, Bethel Center, AARP, United Way of Milford, the Storehouse Project to support members and their social services needs. We've offered assistance in locating COVID nineteen vaccines for individuals fifty five plus and submitted intake for over a hundred homebound seniors. Our Meals on Wheels program speed up fifty five percent increase in the numbers of Meals on Wheels clients this past year. And we've also created, because we've been delivering food from our, from our program, from our mini lunch program, people who would have had to wait in a list to be put on our Meals on Wheels, Meals on Wheels, did not have to do that. They are immediately placed in our in-house food program until their name was called in through the Meals on Wheels program. So a person was, did not actually have to wait for a meal, and we're very proud of that, that we've been able to serve folks. Lastly, we are waiting a new Meals on Wheels van that was purchased in part with a CDBG grant and CDBG CV grant along with other grants monies along the way. So I am very happy of of the of what we were able to do while our doors were closed, semi-closed or limited during this past year. Additionally, I want to just say the team at the Milford Senior Center are one of the hardest working folk I have ever had the pleasure of working with. Every person who comes in is dedicated to serving seniors. Each person comes in dedicated every day to work hard and serve this community. Thank you. I'll take any questions from any of the members of board or anyone else.
Any members of the board have any questions for Leonora? Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to tell you, a couple of weeks ago, I received the invitation from Ms. Rodriguez to go to the senior center, and I had not been in about a year. And I have to tell you that her description of the projects of what they've been doing at the senior center in the outreach they've been doing was rather modest. When you go in that building, the projects to the interior, fixing up the inside of that building is amazing. It pops. It is brighter. It is lighter. It is happier. The floors shine. All of the projects she talked about that were done by Public Works and the people who work on behalf of the senior center have transformed that facility into something that is going to shine like a jewel that we have not seen. And under Leonora's leadership, that keeps going in that direction. The food bank, the food bank is amazing. They've transformed a room in the senior center that has canned goods, fresh goods, dry goods, organized, gluten-free, low calorie for people who need it to come in, and it is warm, it is inviting. You're given a shopping cart. You're given the opportunity to take your time. It's relaxed. You're not rushed. There's no odd feeling about it. It's very warm and inviting. And I just have to say, if any of my fellow Alders did not get down there this budget season to see what is going on at the senior center, please, please go even after the budget hearings are over, because there are great things going on there. And when we have more people that are able to go there and get there in person is really going to have a tremendous effect on those people in our community who that center so vitally, vitally supports. And I want to thank you, Leonora Rodriguez. You're doing a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. Thank you.
Alderman Win Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, if if I had, if I wrote something down to discuss the senior center, I would have thought that Alderman Sutton had plagiarized what I was going to say. Because I agree with everything that he just said. I also took the invitation to go to the senior center. I don't know what I was expecting, but I was absolutely blown away by what Ms. Rodriguez had shown me in that building. I mean, they have a a wee center for their members to play wee for recreational purposes. They have a billiards room. The food bank, as Alderman Sutton has pointed out, was absolutely amazing. It it seemed, and maybe it was just me, but it seemed to be color coordinated. So it was easy to decipher between different canned foods and things like that. The the wood structures that the food was on was painted to make it welcoming. I mean, it was just absolutely amazing. I was blown away by it. They're doing an amazing job over there. They have all of the individuals who volunteer on the wall with all their volunteer hours. And Ms. Rodriguez, who is the the person with the seven thousand hours of volunteer work?
Yes, that's that's our Miss Pam Holden. She's absolutely amazing.
Yeah, and I wanted to publicly recognize her because that is just exceptional, exceptional work. I mean, the amount of hours that that people donate, you know, their time to the senior center is absolutely tremendous. So I I was, you know, after seeing all of that, I was looking at my own biological clock because I wanted to join. I wanted to join the billiards room so I can go there and play, play simple. So it was just terrific. And and as Alderman Sutton indicates, if you have not been able to get there from that invitation from Ms. Rodriguez, please do so. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Marlowe.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Leonora. Again, I was able to take the tour of the of the senior center and Alderman Willis was there and joined me as well. And I'd have to, I don't want to go through everything that just was said, but it is an amazing facility. You are doing a great job, and I was impressed when we talked about what your vision for the future was for the senior center. And at some point tonight's probably not the night for you sharing that, but I was really impressed with that. I also, like we were saying, liked the facility, the different rooms I did enjoy as well, where you have, I'll call it a virtual veterans' wall there, where you have the different veterans can put, family can put their pictures up on the on the screen in there, and it is a rolling thing that goes through and shows all the veterans and the service that they've done. One of the challenges, though, that I wanted to just follow up with you on that you had mentioned, and I wanted to see if any headway was made as of yet, is for you to be able to start serving meals out of the facility again. I know that you were working with the Health Department on that, and has there been any headway made in that?
There hasn't yet, only because really we want to be somewhat conservative, just like the Health Department has been. And we want them to be able to give the, give us their blessings. So until it's really a recommendation by a Health Department, we're kind of on a holding pattern for the in-house. However, we are set to start our outdoor dining area once again. With the recently with the governor's order and for Mara for May nineteen, excuse me, that might change some things. So we're just kind of being very hopeful that that's going to be something that in the very near future we can offer to our members again. And, you know, and it's much more than just having a meal together. It's that socialization. You know, it's our meals are great, but it's really just them being able to be with friends, you know. So we are working on that, and we we look forward to having them join us once again.
Thank you for your presentation and for all the work you and your staff are doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Tranquility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would hate to repeat what my fellow Alderman said, but I also had the opportunity to do a walkthrough with Leonora. And I had never, I'd actually never been in there before. You know, there's actually a lot to offer at the facility. They they do, they do so much, much more than than we're actually recognizing them for. And I enjoyed the almost three-hour walkthrough in conversation that that we had. You know, I just wanted to say that you and your team are doing a great job. I just wanted to commend you and your team on that, and I appreciated the walkthrough. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tranquility.
Alderman Parenti.
Good evening. Through you, Chairman. Leonora, I'm wondering about the, is there feedback on my? Can you hear me? Okay. I'm wondering about the homebound folks who I know how important it is for them to have kind of social interaction. I'm worried about how they are doing. I know last year you were going to pursue phone calls out. Was there anything that you could tell us about that? Is there technology that would be helpful to them, any needs that you might have in the future that you didn't pay that we could think about, even just as a community in terms of helping with those folks? I'm just so, you know, concerned about them and their inability to get into town. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Alderman Parenti. In terms of our homebound, there's several things that are going on at the same time with our folks. Some are dealing with medical issues. Some are dealing with income limits, and those two things sometimes cross in the path of of technology because you may not be able to afford the technology to interact with us with our Zoom programs that we have, which are fantastic. Nor may you want to if you're not feeling well. One of the best things that the community can do is really reach out to those neighbors that they have. We're one center with, you know, little under thirty people working here. We have a dedicated wellness assistant now, which was a new hire this year, who has been assisting and making calls. We have our social service worker, Christine Lias, who has been with us for about two and a half years now, actually three years now. And and between those two, they've been connecting with those folks. And we're trying to find out how can we get them to engage with us a little more. And what we've discovered is it can't just be us. It has to be the full community. The whole community really has to take responsibility for caring for older adults that may not have anyone with them. We have individuals who are, for lack of a better phrase, an elder orphan who does not have a spouse, may not have children, may not have other extended family nearby, and we have to care for them. We have to be able to say, if you need us, call us, or better yet, I'm going to give you a call and make sure you're okay. I make those calls as well. It's not just, you know, like I said, the wellness caller, our social service person. It takes a village. It really does, and it takes a city to to be, you know, cognizant of the well-being of others. So to kind of sort of answer it, we've been continuing with our phone calls. We do a lot of outreach. Our our Meals on Wheels drivers and supervisors, they they really have a pulse on those individuals because they're seeing them every day just about and helping them. And just even that very slight moment or time that they're just interacting from a distance, they're breaking that isolation for our individuals. So I hope that kind of sort of answered, it's not a full answer, but it's a direction that we are going is how are we supporting those folks? And we do that as as a village.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board for Ms. Rodriguez? I don't see any more. So I want to thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you again for all the great work you've been doing and listening to the Alderman this evening. It's going to make it my, we do make a little visit myself. It sounds like a very well worth, well worth trip. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And yes, I invite everyone to come to the senior center if you had not had the pleasure of coming to visit. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
You too, you as well. The next department on our agenda is the Bethel Center, page ninety two. Jen Paradies.
Good evening, Jen. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm sad that I missed the senior center tour. I'm sad that I missed the senior center tour, so I'll have to find time for that as well. It's wonderful to see you all after such an incredible year. It's just nice to know that everybody is, is safe and well. You know, of course, what we've learned is over this year or reaffirmed over this year is, is what we've known all along is that housing and food security continue to be just necessary backbones to our community. This year we saw increased food and shelter needs and calls into 211 are a reflection of that. Over the past month, the calls into 211 around housing and shelter needs increased by over 100%. Where numbers, shelter requests in February of 2020 were 63. And this past February were 146. So not, certainly not the direction that we want to see, but kind of sets the stage for the work to come that, that we have. For clarity, these are calls among employment and income, food, housing and shelter, mental health and addiction services and utilities. Folks were calling for, for food and shelter the most. We've seen 4,300 calls just about into 20, into 211 from Milford over the past year. 30% were from food needs and housing needs and 50% of those needs, those housing needs were specifically for shelter. With 10% of those needs going unmet. So we, we have a long way to go. Our goal over the past year has been to expand programs and services while not compromising the health and safety of our staff, clients, volunteers and community at large. We never closed. At first it was about educating our folks, people experiencing homelessness and hunger in the community about COVID-19. Ensuring that they had access to the resources that they needed to keep themselves safe, to keep the people they love safe and to keep all of us safe. Masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, bathrooms, showers, food and shelter became the recipe for keeping vulnerable folks out of the hospital and kept us working toward our mission to end homelessness. We expanded our outreach and engagement program over 2020 and into this year. So now we, I've mentioned to this board previously that we started an outreach and engagement program critical for responding to unsheltered homelessness. That has been functioning as one full-time position. We did receive a grant through the Department of Housing and now offer evening and weekend outreach and engagement hours as well. So very excited about that. We've also established a diversion program where we have a diversion specialist who takes those calls from 211 that are, are coming up in the Milford region and connects with them. And the, the whole purpose of that relationship is to divert folks from the shelter system and either stabilize them in their current housing situation or help them transition to another housing situation without having to enter into the shelter system. This is critical for families, critical for kids. With 2020 behind us, we can reflect a little bit. We served 117% more households in our emergency shelter program and over 40% more daily meals. It's certainly shown and, and I love hearing the presentations of, of partners here tonight, just how incredible this community can be. But we know moving forward what our mission is and what our drive is. And it's really to ensure that we are stabilizing food insecurity and housing insecurity. We're returning these situations, these concerns back to pre-pandemic levels. And then we're not stopping there, but continuing our efforts to reduce the amount of folks who are experiencing housing insecurity and food insecurity in Milford. So happy to answer any questions that folks may have. You know, I recognize it's a long evening for you all. We have done a lot of work around this operating budget to make sure that we are supporting the increased services that we have without relying on additional dollars to asked by the, the city of, of Milford. You all have been incredibly supportive of our mission and, and our programs and services over the past few years, of course. And, but happy to answer any additional questions. It's a, it's a flat ask from previous years.
Thank you, Jennifer. Does anybody have any questions for Jennifer? F L Shelter, F L Center. I don't see anybody questions. You've done such a great job with your presentation and you've answered everybody's question.
I guess so.
Well, you have a good, you have a great night and thank you very much for your coming to us and answering all our questions that we don't, that we, we didn't need to ask because you've done a good job giving us all that information. Next department on our agenda is the Health Department. Deepa Joseph. Good evening, Deepa.
Good evening. Very nice to see you all. It has been, just like everyone said, a very long, long year that continues to move forward, but I'm happy to be here. Just to start out, usually I come before you with some nice pieces of paper with some pictures and graphs. I'm going to just share my screen really just to focus on a lot of the COVID work that we've been doing this year. That being said, I, and hopefully you can see this. That being said, I do want to also just stress that while this work is really just our, sorry, my computer is. Okay, while this work is really just our COVID work, I just want to point out to everybody that the year has included all of our routine work in, in addition to our response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So this just gives you a couple of at a glance statistics from March 2020, which is when Milford saw its first confirmed case of COVID-19 through last week through April 22nd. So where we were at the end of last week is 4,533 laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 with 128 confirmed COVID-19 associated deaths. Of note in those statistics is that of the deaths, only 30, 37 of those deaths were community based with the remainder being long-term care or assisted living in Milford. And in terms of the community, the community cases of COVID of the 4533, about 4150 are community based with the remainder being long-term care or assisted living. Just of note in that and relative to the work that the staff has been doing is that with the majority of those cases, our staff has worked to contact trace with many of those cases early on before there was even a statewide database system developed. We were, we were contacting everybody, sending out notices on how to isolate and, and proper procedures to follow. And so we continue to do that contact tracing work on a day-to-day basis to reach as many people as we can to talk about isolation, to talk about quarantining and close contacts, as well as to talk about testing. And then we also, in terms of the vaccination effort, the Milford Health Department has been conducting, conducting COVID-19 vaccine clinics over at the Parsons Gym twice a week since the, since December 23rd was our first clinic. And so since that time, the Health Department has administered over 12,500 doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. And in total of Milford residents, as at the end of last week, we have a little over 30,000 residents who have received at least their first dose of COVID-19 vaccine. On the vaccination effort, once we had set up our clinic over at the Parsons Gym, we had been approached by Yale New Haven Hospital, Bridgeport Hospital, Milford Campus with the idea of being able to share that space so that on the days that we are not operating clinic, that the hospital would be able to operate and offer expanded access to our residents as well as residents of surrounding communities so that partnership continues on for the next few months. And then just to give you a little idea of just, the pandemic has involved a significant amount of work and burden for the staff at the Milford Health Department. And just a little slice of what that means is we have captured the calls that have come in really, and this is just a reflection of just our clerical staff. So it does not include calls that have been handled by our sanitarians, by our nursing staff, by myself and our community health staff. But since the pandemic started, we have had 5,419 calls relative to COVID-19 alone. And just of note, we've had as many calls in the past three months almost as we received in the, the nine months of the beginning of the pandemic. So calls have only continued to increase and those calls can be anything from complaints related to COVID-19 enforcement, questions around contact tracing, questions around exposure, questions around testing and a variety of other issues. And then last but not least, the other area of COVID-19 response is really in the area of enforcement and receiving complaints from members of the community regarding COVID-19 and specifically public health nuisances related to COVID-19. So since March 2020 to date, we've received 319 complaints and we've included kind of the breakdown by facility with a number of those complaints relative to food sap, food service establishments and concerns around COVID-19 sector rules and, and enforcement around that. So that's just an overview of, again, our COVID-19 response. But again, in addition to that, we have continued our routine work in all of our departments. And I would be remiss if I did not just point out what an amazing staff we have at the Health Department. We are not a big staff, but we have, everyone has really stepped up to the plate and gone above and beyond this year. So I'm grateful for our staff and that is kind of all I have and just on the budget, just a couple of things to note. We did request an increase in overtime and that also has been relative to a lot of the work around COVID-19. And so while things are looking better overall in the state and in our community, we know that for, as the local health department, this work is going to continue for a long time for our department in terms of contact tracing and enforcement and education and a variety of efforts. And so we have requested that increase in overtime in the seasonal temporary line item as well as that is where our community health nurse who is part-time, those hours come from that line item. And she has been critical in our, again, contact tracing efforts, but also in our homebound vaccine program as well as our vaccination clinics. And then also within the Health Department budget, I have also requested the reinstatement of the deputy director position at the Health Department. This is a position I have requested reinstatement of over the past few years. And this year has definitely demonstrated the, the need for this position. It again is a reinstatement, it's a position that existed before and I was actually in the position prior to becoming director of the department. And really, one of the most critical aspects of this position that really came to light this year is that currently there really is not a, a backup internally to my position. So we have been blessed in the past 14, 15 months that the supervisory staff and myself have, have been around and have been able to continue through. But in previous years, we have had MOUs or agreements with towns of Stratford and West Haven to provide backup coverage when either I'm out of town or unavailable for a lengthy period of time. We have, while those agreements exist, we have not been able to really utilize them because we are in a situation where local health departments are overwhelmed, to say the least. And so we, I have not been able to sign out to another department or district as a result. So we are requesting the reinstatement of that position and there is much work to be done. And hopefully, once we can get past this pandemic, the goal is that position will also help to continue to move us forward. So I'm happy to take any questions on the Health Department account.
Mr. Chairman.
This is the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I am not saying anything that you do not already know, but the city of Milford is so blessed to have Deepa Joseph as our Director of Health. She is a leader in the region, a leader in the state. She has been keeping all of our families safe, our community healthy for the past year during this pandemic. And, you know, before that, just with the way that she handles everything and approaches in a sensible, thoughtful, tremendous way. She just is the type of person that you want in these types of situations. And her team has also been equal to the task. Every single one of our school nurses have, has gone above and beyond, not just doing the work of our schools, but our community health system, her team of sanitarians, all those that work in the Health Department have stepped up and gone above and beyond. And we will be forever grateful. The position of Deputy Health Director, it is the only new position in the budget. As Deepa mentioned, it is not a new position per se, it had existed previous. It is a position I support. I know that it was introduced at the Board of Finance. It was a scripter's error that it was omitted during the budget from the mayor's office to the Board of Finance, but it's something that I think is important, especially given the times that we're in and some of the new information that we have seen over the course of the last pandemic year. But again, kudos to Deepa and her team. You continue to keep our city of Milford very healthy.
Thank you, Mayor Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Tranquility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Deepa. Good evening, Deepa. So the Board of Education, Dr. Katia, the other night had given a presentation for the Board of Ed and mentioned that we are going to continue for now to stay at the six foot distance. And she was, I believe, was going off the recommendations of the Milford Health Department, where I believe the CDC had changed it to three feet. What is, what is the Milford Health Department using to give the Board of Ed the recommendations to stay at the six feet? Is it the contact tracing that is giving you the opportunity to make it, make a decision and, and give them the information that they need to keep it at six feet?
So we are following all of the CDC and State Health Department guidelines. When the CDC came out with that adjustment to allow for three feet spacing, they did not change the definition of what a close contact is. So while they have stated that three feet may be allowable from a distancing perspective, the definition of a close contact remains an individual who is within six feet for a certain amount of time. So that being said, we have really been successful as a school district and in implementing all the protocols that have been placed, that have been in place from the beginning of the year to be able to avoid what some other school districts have had to do in terms of full classrooms being quarantined, full school, but buildings being closed due to these large sweeping quarantines because of, because we have maintained that six feet and really have been able to, for the most part, really hone in on only the individuals who really need to be quarantined and have not had to do the broad sweeping quarantines as a result of using the six feet. So while that definition of a close contact remains with the CDC and the State Health Department, you know, we would continue to recommend that schools maintain that six foot distance within the classroom. And if that adjusts down the line, and that is a piece of conversation that has also happened between the State Health Department and the CDC on calls in order to ask them if at any point they would be considering changing that definition of a close contact and that would probably be when we would reevaluate.
Okay, then that pretty much answers my other question about feeling, how would you feel about the three feet instead of the six feet? And it had come up the other night, I think we used orange as an example. And were they quarantining the entire classroom or that entire class because they're, they're at the three feet instead of the six feet where Milford can? three feet instead of the six feet where Milford can not quite quarantine that whole classroom? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other Aldermen that have any questions for the Health Department? I don't see any. While you're right there, Deepa, we're going to have you answer questions regarding the Health Services VNA. Anybody have any questions concerning the Health Department VNA? I don't see any of that department as well. Move on to the Educational Health Services School Nurses. Anybody have any questions regarding that department? Seeing none, we'll go on to the last department under Deepa Joseph, Human Services Department. Anybody have any questions regarding Human Services Department?
If I could just add a couple of comments about Human Services, because I did not comment on that, just as a point of awareness. While I think many people are aware of a lot of the things that the Health Department has done over the past year, I'm not always sure that everyone has recognized the impact to the Human Services Department relative to more individuals in our community that have been impacted. And so over the past year at Human Services, we have seen an increase in the number of clients who are coming to our agency requesting assistance, whether that be emergency food assistance, utilities, rent, mortgage. And we anticipate that those requests will continue to come and will increase over the next few months, particularly as the various moratoria in the state lift and more people are in need of assistance. So we have also seen that we are serving clients who have not traditionally come to our agency. So more clients who are on the edge primarily due to the impact of COVID, whether that be in the form of a layoff, in the form of impact of actual infection on their families resulting in time loss from work or resulting in time loss from work due to the need to take care of children or elderly in the household. So in particular, where we've seen the most increase in requests for assistance is in the area of emergency food vouchers. So we have seen over the past year a 200% increase in requests for food vouchers. And we have also seen just overall an increase of about 50% in the number of individuals that we are serving at this point in time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Is there any Aldermen that have any questions for the Human Services Department? I don't see any. So once again, thank you, Deepa, for answering all our questions and giving us a great presentation that you always do. And thank you for keeping our community safe as you've done over the years. So under the next department, we're going to go into the Management Information Services. Yes.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everybody. It's a tough act to follow. But briefly, we have a tremendous number of projects that are ongoing and the improvement and upgrading of all of our technology within the city. And commending my staff, we did a seamless transition to remote work during our lockdown. And they worked continuously through the entire process to keep the city operational while everybody was remote working, and they continue to do so today. And thanks all the departments for their patience as we worked through some of the earlier bugs and got adapted to working remotely. Recently, within the last couple of weeks, we filled our vacant position. So we are now having new employees getting up to speed rather quickly, so we hope to serve the departments even better. The only change to discuss on the budget was an increase to our mobile, our cell phone line, and that's to support the more mobile workforce that we have that not only includes the COVID needs, but also more of Health Department and DPLU and other departments that will be being able to work from a field rather than a desk to get more inspections and more work to be done. With that, I open to any questions.
Does any Alderman have any questions regarding the Management Information System? I don't see any questions. Thank you very much for your presentation and for coming out tonight. Mr. Mayor. Do you have your hand up?
Mr. Chairman, I was just acknowledging our MIS Director, who does a great job. Again, the IT load has been increased exponentially this year as we've shifted to remote meetings and remote work, and a lot more has been placed on his department. So Adam has been doing a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Adams for all the work that you've done in trying to get this city on the new advanced systems that we're dealing with. I know it's not easy, that's for sure. But we'll move on to the next department, the Finance Department. Mr. Peter Iriducchi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the board and members of the other city departments and esteemed guests. It has been a challenging year, as we've all acknowledged. I think year after year, the Finance Department deals with numerous challenges and overcomes them, and it's definitely not an easy task to accomplish what we do. And this year is no exception. It has risen to the top. And I'd like to thank all the members of the Finance Department for their hard work and dedication throughout this year and for quickly adjusting to the changes that the pandemic wrought on our department. They rose to the challenge and kept operations moving continuously and seamlessly, and I'm very proud of what they've accomplished, and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with them. I have some members of the department present here tonight. We have Corey Gumber, it's our tax collector. I'm also pleased to acknowledge Marcus Eric, our City Assessor. He was previously the Deputy Assessor and was promoted this, earlier this year, to the position of Assessor. And so I also believe we have Mary Ann Kling, our Treasurer, who may also be listening in as well. So I thank them for taking the time to be here with me. Briefly, if looking at our department request, we are grateful for the continued support of the Board of Aldermen, and we thank you for taking our budget request this year under consideration. We have just a few strategic and necessary modest increases in three line items. Of course, in regular wages, we have some positions that are eligible for contractual step increase, so that accounts for the increase in that line item. We have an increase in the seasonal temp account of about $10,000, and that's primarily in the Assessor Division, and that is due to the vacancies that we currently have. We have two vacancies now in the Assessor's office, and we're also undergoing, or the reevaluation, I should say, has started and will continue throughout this current fiscal year and into fiscal year '22. And so we do need an increase in that item, line item, to help. We always have a seasonal temporary expense component in the Assessor Department, but with the revaluation and with the vacancies, we definitely need the increase requested there. And also, we have an increase of $10,000 in revaluation operations. Again, we've tried to contribute to this revale account that's in Fund 40 each year and spread out the cost of the in-house revaluation over time. Again, due to the reasons I just mentioned, we asked for a modest increase there. I will also point out, as you may recall, in the Professional and Other Special Services, the Assessor had requested $200,000, but in the mayor's budget and under the Board of Finance, we eliminated that and funded that in the amount of $175,000 through a Board of Aldermen allocation transfer in order to hire vision to assist the Assessor with the revaluation, especially in light of the fact that, for a period of time, we had to deal with the retirement of Dan Thomas. And I'd like to commend Marcus Eric, who really helped us out throughout the past year, trying to juggle the responsibilities of the two positions as best as he could. And I'm very pleased that he is now permanently in the Assessor's position, and I look forward to working with the entire team as we try to continue to meet the challenges of this pandemic and also the challenges of the constantly changing rules and regulations that come upon us from the federal state governments and also with the many types of grants and accounts that we administer. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for the Finance Department? Well, thank you, Peter, for that presentation, as always. And I know you're doing a great job just by the how many awards your Finance Department has gotten over the years. I try to recognize that every time it's happened. It happens quite often. So congratulations again, and thank you for coming this evening to inform us of what the happenings are in the Finance Department. The next department we're going to be listening to would be the Registrar of Voters, Carrie Rowland and Deborah Fellenbaum.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening, Carrie. Good evening, Deborah. You're on.
Thanks. We're here to talk about the Registrar of Voters Office, but also in conjunction with Karen Fortunati, the City Clerk, the elections account. First, if I could just have one moment, I know it's been a long night for everyone, but I want to thank Deborah and Karen for the collaborative effort that we had. As everyone's talked about, COVID was no different. It turned our election cycle upside down, starting with the changing of the presidential preference primary date several times last year. And just with that start, it made things very difficult for our department. And without the staff in both the City Clerk's office and in our office, and without the poll workers who were out on the front lines, manning the polling places on Election Day, but also the workers that handled the unprecedented amount of absentee ballots that needed to be processed and counted and kept track of. We really, this was a total team effort, and there were over 100 people involved in making it happen and pulling it off. And I also want to thank, and I know I speak for Deborah and Karen, when I thank the other city departments that worked with us tirelessly to pull it off, especially Board of Ed and Public Works and the Health Department to make sure that we were compliant with all of the changes that were happening in terms of what the CDC was recommending and keeping our poll workers safe and our voters safe so that they could cast their ballots. We have a very small increase in our postage account in the Registars Office. It's something that we've asked you for in years past with the increase in postage, but also we've seen a, it's much easier for voters to update their information with us through the online voter registration system and through DMV that we have to acknowledge with a letter every time somebody makes a change to their address or they want to change parties and things like that. So we see, especially in a presidential year, but we've been trending the need for more money in our postage account for a couple of years. So we're hoping that you will approve what the mayor and what the finance have already approved. And then finally, I just, I want to say that Deborah and myself and Karen did a lot this year just to pull off the election, but also to maintain our training that we had to take and to fill out all of the requested paperwork and documentation regarding funding and planning for COVID and holding an election so that we could secure grants from both the state and the federal government. And without that money and making sure that we had taken our responsibility seriously enough to get that funding, we would not have, we would have been weighing over budget. And I'm very proud to say that we stayed with the help of the grant funding within our budget this year. There were times throughout the year I didn't think we would be able to pull that off. So it is something I'm especially proud of, but I know that Deborah and Karen and I, you know, we really, and our staff worked very hard to pull that off. So we were very mindful of the taxpayer dollars as we went through this. So I will now open it up to questions for the Registars of Voters or Elections, because Karen is here too. So anything that you might need to know from us, we're here to answer your questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie, for that presentation. Does anybody or any Alderman have any questions for Registrar of Voters? I don't see any. Does anybody have any questions for Elections? Or City Clerk, along with Karen is with us as well? I don't see. Alderman Frank Smith.
I had any opportunities. This past election was probably one of the most rankrific and bitterly divisive elections in many years, and it had all the earmarks of becoming a very difficult in the middle of everything else. A bad moment in our history. And when people talk about the political parties and the officials that run, people like us and the board, the real backbone of our democracy really is, and I never appreciated it more than I did this year, the people like, like our registrars, Deborah and Carrie and their staff, and our fine city clerk, and the way that they were able to organize with the new drop boxes, the ever-moving targets, all of the scrutiny that came with the long hours that they put in and the weeks leading up to it and all the preparation. They are the, they are the profiles encouraged. They are the people that really make this civil engagement that we need to have as a people of the republic and being able to vote in a fair and open election. They are, they are the mainstays. They are the people that make that happen and the backbone of our democracy. And I'm not exaggerating when I say that because Milford is a microcosm. As old as this country is, older than our constitution, we are very fortunate to have them. Mentioned that this year like no other in the depths of this pandemic, the pull off of elections season that we did with as few issues as we had is a testimony to their creativity and their real hard work.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Does anybody have any questions for, I'm going to give an opportunity for the City Clerk, Karen Fortunati, Fortunati, I'm sorry, just to say a few words. Karen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I want, thank you, Alderman Smith, for the kind words. I also want to take a minute to recognize the extraordinary leadership of our registrars. I watched them from January of 2020 on, starting to plan for basically every possibility. They drew on their knowledge, their extensive experience, and their amazing grace under pressure. I feel lucky that I was able to work with them. I know many clerks don't have a good relationship with their registrars, and Milford is blessed to have Carrie and Deborah in this position. They are really amazing, and I would watch the news at night and see the anxiety and the hatred and the emotion regarding this past election. And I would come to work during the day, and I would see the single-minded focus on protecting the process that was completely nonpartisan, and it was a really beautiful and reassuring thing to see. We are so lucky that not only we have Carrie and Deborah, but we are supported by our colleagues in the Registars Office and but we are supported by our colleagues in the registrar's office and my office, the clerk's office. Absolutely amazing work. They never questioned. They never complained. It was always, what can I do? What can I do? It was, it was, it was a, it was really a beautiful and patriotic thing to witness. So I'm really glad to be a part of it and I'm very grateful. And I think that we're very lucky here in Milford. We're in good hands. The Milford voters are in very good hands. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, for that. Does anyone have any questions for the city clerk's office? I don't see any. Thank you again, Karen, for that presentation and also those nice comments. I know we have, we're very lucky in the city of Milford to have your staff as well as the registrar's staff to run things during the election and throughout the whole year. I mean, that documentations are very, very, very important and you guys taking great care of making sure that everything is under protected and we're very proud of you. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Department, their agenda is Public Works Office, Chris Salee. Good evening, Chris. Good night, Karen. Good night, Debbie.
Good evening, Chairman Vetro. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the board and talk about Public Works Department and its budget. And I do appreciate everyone else that spoke before us in a long year. It's been, it definitely has been a long year. But I definitely, not to drag this out, but I would like to express my sincere thanks to my staff, especially my supervisors and foremen's from Billy Plant, the mayor, who's ran Solid Waste, Tom Hunt, Parks and Highway, Sly Moore and Sean Bennett in building maintenance, Lindsay King in wastewater and Corey Venna in, in, in the garage. And a special thanks to Steve Johnson, who I know pretty much everyone knows how hard he works for the city. But this project, this CHP, which is our microgrid energy source, he's been working pretty much seven days a week, you know, 12, 15 hour days, literally for the last four months to get this project. And we just had a final witness test. So we anticipate hopefully going live on that in the next, you know, probably month, month and a half where we'll start to see actually a savings from it. So we're, we're very excited about that. And, and similar to what everyone else from Deep Joseph to Senior Center, just want to express the, the hard work that our staff does every day. And I think a lot of people miss it or don't see it as much as they probably should. And it was funny this morning when I started the thought process of what I was going to speak about. I said, I, I don't normally write things down. I normally wing things. And I just said, okay, let's talk about this. Every time there's been a project in the cities in the seven years I've been here, whenever this, the project has fallen through or had a shortcut or there's been an issue, Public Works has stepped up to the table from, from the library where there was some issues with the design and I'll say, and there was things that were left off that Mark and Kevin went in there for a week and ran a lot of the low voltage and computer issues that they had to address to Beaverbrook Trails where we didn't have enough funding in the grant money. And Steve Johnson took it upon himself to work with our departments, both Parks and Highway and Tree Removal and Surveying Engineering to, to really get that project on track. And I think it's a, an asset to the city. Very proud of that, what's going on to our fuel cell that's down at Beaverbrook, which we finally got a cost analysis over the last 12 months. It's a 20 year commitment that we've made to buy power, but it's going to save the city approximately $350,000 a year in energy costs over the next 20 years each year. It's a tremendous amount of money that Lindsay King was involved with, Ed Kozlowski, myself, and, and, and these are the things that are, are really good that are going on with the city. And then I just opened up to other, other things that the board or anyone has any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo it. Public Works, as other departments have mentioned before, really is our saving grace. They always step up when times are tough and give support and aid and help to each of our other departments, even city partners that aren't necessarily part of the, the city, you know, they are there to be the, the support system for the, the safety net to make sure that our entire infrastructure stays fresh and well-kept and safe. So all the different gymnastics that other departments have had to go through to, to adjust facilities so that they are healthy and safe. Public Works was the one that, you know, put the actual work into motion and installed protective equipment and moved desks and chairs so that we could continue to operate and so that the city continued to move forward even during the pandemic. So kudos to Chris, to Steve and to their fantastic staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any Alderman have any questions for Public Works Director? Concerning any one of the departments, he's taken care of highway parks, well, Public Works Office, Highway Parks, Building Maintenance, Engineering Department, General Garage and Solid Waste and Wastewater. So if you have any questions regarding any one of those departments, just raise your hand and tell me what department you're referring your question to. Alderman Marlowe. Alderman Marlowe.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chris. Just a quick question, I, maybe quick, is we had talked earlier about that there are, you know, some unfilled positions within the few departments and wondering, you know, one, how long have those been unfilled? And obviously you're actively seeking to fill those. So what is the status of those positions?
Sure. Thank, thank you for the question. I appreciate it. Little background, I started with the city over seven years ago. And in that timeframe, through, no layoffs, but through reduction in staff, through people retiring, we've reduced 26 positions. At the present time, we're down 27 positions in addition to that 26. And we have two people that are going to retire in the near probably month and a half. That'll be 29. And we have two people that one is on a long-term disability. So it's been a real struggle for this department to be responsive to residents' needs. It's probably one of my biggest frustrations, if I can be blatantly honest. And I think Alderman, when Smith asks about comparing, we're not comparing. I will just give you the facts. The facts are, we have an assistant or an engineering inspector position that's been vacant for 18 months. The person that was there left for a better opportunity to work for DOT. We've interviewed two separate times and both times we just didn't have enough money in the budget to make someone want to change. Tanya Barnes brought up the issue of, we do have entry level positions that are fairly well received for the city. City offers a very competitive healthcare package and other things. But when you get into the skilled part, the skilled programs, I, I think we struggle. I think the long-term effect is going to be detrimental to the city. We have to be proactive, not reactive. And I would say this, my grandmother had a great line, sometimes the most expensive thing is the cheapest in the long run. And I'll close with this, we have a wastewater superintendent or foreman, I should say, foreman down at Beaverbrook that's been vacant for over almost four years, four years in June. That's a DEEP requirement that we're just not competitive with salaries, not even close. And it's a frustration of mine that I can't explain anymore than just what I just said. But thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, Chris, um, so the, the, the positions that aren't filled, and I understand the frustration with that. Who takes on the responsibility of those positions right now? I mean, the, the work needs to be done, whatever it might be. So someone's taking on those positions, I guess, right? That would have to be how it works. And then the, do you see that when you do fill these positions, what will that do for your budget? Because I'm assuming that the money that you're getting from those positions right now, or that's there, you're using for other things. And I understand that that's not my issue. I'm just wondering what that's going to do to your budget when you do fill the positions?
So these are budgeted positions that are in the budget at the end of the year. Typically there's a surplus and you are correct, we do use the, the monies for different projects, for different overtime, for example. We have a number of times when people, when they're having a position like that, how do you make up for it? It's done through overtime with the existing staff. But I will say that the, you know, there's a feeling, and I'll use wastewater as an example, very unique. It's very hard to compare this, this sewer system, Milford Sewer System to others. Strapper, which is right next to us, has one treatment plant. I think it has 14 or 15 pump stations. We have two treatment plants, two substantial treatment plants with over 43 pump stations. So it's really comparing apples with tangerines. But, so when you're looking at things, it is hard, but I will say that I think we have to be a little bit more aggressive with how we're going out after especially skilled positions. And without getting into detail, we had a gentleman that was going to leave the city after being here for about a year for an opportunity to make $10 more an hour in the private sector. The mirror was helpful in, in allowing us to go to a stop, top step with that. And it took a lot of persuasion, but the gentleman finally stayed. But that's a big difference. And, and people nowadays are not looking for careers, looking for where the money is right now. So you got to balance that a little bit, I think.
Sure. I, Mr. Chairman, again, I know that, you know, with the acquisition of even the, the the newest building that the city has, the St. Gabriel's, do you see that you're going to need to increase staff to keep up with demand, so to speak?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the long-term plan is with that building, if it's, if it's going to be our responsibility or another group entity. But yeah, I would say that that would be the case, that you, you can't expect for the department to continue. I think the department has done a tremendous job. When I say department, all the divisions of, of doing more with less, doing more with less. But I will say, I'm pretty comfortable saying that this department, out of all the departments in the city, has given more than anyone and is at the end of its giving. It just doesn't have any more left, especially with the increased requirements. Listen, residents want to be, you know, responsive and, and I, I'm struggling because we're not as responsive as I would like us to be.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Does any other Alderman have any questions for any of the Public Works divisions? Alderman Vitale.
Good evening, Mr. Good evening, Chris. I guess I had some questions, you know, how many, how many positions are open? You said you're going to be 29. You have 27, 29 pretty soon because two people are retiring, retiring. My other question was probably answered also, what position probably would be the most difficult to fill at this particular point? And you said, I think you said that as I, as I read through what you were saying was the waste, the superintendent of wastewater. You haven't had one for four years. Ed Kozlowski has been filling in deep requirement, DEEP requirement. And I guess we're not, we're not allowing ourselves to be compliant with deep requirements. So I, I would imagine that would be the most difficult position to, 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 to get a handle on. But I, I want you to know this, that I also sit on the Milford Public Works Committee Commission. And a few years, few months ago, we, we bipartisanly discussed supporting you in creating the lessening of those open positions. In other words, supporting you in, in getting these positions filled. A, a report was supposed to be gotten out to the rest of the, the rest of the board and it never was. And I, I don't understand why it wasn't, but that's a moot point, I guess, at this, this time. But I can't understand when we're increasing, and I think Mr. Smith brought it up, Alderman Smith brought it up a while back, increasing salaries, looking around and being competitive or whatever. And we're not competitive and probably one of the more important areas in, in public works in any city is wastewater. And so I, I think you gave your explanation. I just can't understand, I guess it's a soliloquy here of, of not understanding why it can't be filled. Why are we having so much problem that we cannot be competitive? Because we need to be competitive in all the other areas that we hire directors in, in understanding that, you know, we need top-notch people there. So I guess we are playing a game and the game is most political, even in the budget areas. And, and, you know, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And I think one of them is this, if we're going to hire somebody and be competitive and we're going to be competitive in all of the other areas when we hire a director, why now can we not be competitive in hiring a wastewater superintendent? So, so thank you for all the work you do and your department does. And I leave that question up in the air so other people can comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we have a wastewater superintendent. We hired Lindsay King several years ago and he's working out great. I don't think that is a need at this point. There are some challenges in terms of hiring people throughout all of our different divisions and departments in the city. Public Works is one of them. I know that our Public Works Director is meeting with our HR Director to try to fill all of these open positions. I know that there were three offers that were made within the last couple of days for, to fill three other positions. I know that it's a constant, you know, cycle of bringing on new people and having to, to train those people. And it's a huge department. It's the largest department in the city by a lot. And that's why there's significant openings, just because we have retirees. We have a lot of people that work 10, 20, 30, 40 years and, and over that. And when they retire, they leave, they leave a gap because they have developed so much experience that's hard to then pass along without significant training and significant overlap. So we try to balance that out, but our HR department is working very hard, as is our Public Works Director. We just brought on several new team players over the course of the last year. So this is probably the only department where we have grown over the last couple of years with an assistant director, a new construction manager position. So there are several additional positions above and beyond any of the other departments that we've actually increased the number of positions in public works, even as we've kind of fine tuned some of the departments because of technology. As you know, for example, when we switched over to the automated trash collection system with, we went from having to have three people on a trash truck to one person on a trash truck because we switched over to the hydraulic arms. And that meant we could reduce the 30 plus people in our solid waste division really by more than half. We haven't gotten down to that level yet, even though that was what we had assured this board five or six years ago, that through attrition, we would get down even a couple more than we have this year because we made that investment in technology. It was something that was supported by the department and everywhere else. So that's the, the main reduction in staff that we have, but we've been trying to fine tune in other places too. And I know that Chris is working really hard to try to fill some of those open positions that, that still exist. And again, I think that, you know, one way to kind of demonstrate that we have had a very competitive is that even that position that he mentioned, that he actually has a couple of candidates for that wastewater foreman position that he has to select from. And a couple of different candidates, I, I know that will be willing to, to accept an offer once it's presented.
I, I'd like to clear that up there. Number one, you are correct.
I don't know if we should discuss a specific position. It was brought up probably as it's pending before it's been offered. It probably is not an appropriate time just because it goes to HR, but.
I just, I just want to, I just want to clear something up. You are correct. You did add two positions and we appreciate those. But even with those two positions, in the last seven years, we've given back 26. Getting back to where we are competitive wise, wastewater, I don't think anyone can argue, you can do the math. We're, we're definitely not competitive in that. A mechanic's position is another position that presently we have, there's eight people in that division and we're going to be down to five. It's challenging. So you, you are correct that the entry level positions like the maintainer, the grass cutter, we, we are filling three of those positions or we've offered three positions, I should say. But I just think as a whole, I think it's not the city's best interest to trap or presently not. That's my professional opinion.
Anybody have any questions for the Public Works Division? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Mr. Salee. I do also would like to recognize, you know, all the hard work that you, that you do and within your That you do and within your department, all the hours. That you and all of your staff put in. Um, I don't want you to think that it goes unnoticed and I do also sit on the Public Works Committee. As well, so I have a, um. A firsthand look at the workings of, of all the departments. Um, and I would have to agree with Director Salee. I just would like to share my thoughts and then ask a question. I think best practice, you know, in the private sector is, you know. Speaking for myself, I need to be competitive with wages and salaries for specific skillsets. Without that, it, you know, it, it really puts me at a disadvantage in order to compete. And provide the services that, uh, I'm being paid for. And, and this instance, it would be to Mr. Salee's point of. Being able to be more, you know, uh, responsive to, to the citizens, the taxpayers who ultimately, uh, pay for these positions. So there is a lot of frustration today within the labor market. I think where you, um, have to pay a higher wage, it's, um, it's money well-spent. Um, otherwise, uh, you're always going to be running ragged. And, um, you know, people are going to get burnt out. They're going to get frustrated. They're going to feel like they don't have the support. That you're not listening. And, uh, you certainly don't want a low morale, especially in, in Public Works, because that's the core. Of the city. Um, it supports all the other departments. It supports the community, the beaches, the parks, yeah, uh, everything, uh, you know, uh, the events, the special events that take place down at the green. Um, you know, throughout the year. So I do, and I would like to put a big emphasis on that if we can, you know. Maybe have some further discussions about supporting some of these, um, skillset positions such as wastewater. But the other thing that comes to mind and Mayor Blake mentioned, the, uh, solid waste, the collection. End of the Public Works. Solid Waste Division is picking up the trash. With the struggle to fill some of these positions and with attrition, I, I'm, I'm thinking out loud. Um, uh, and this question is to you, Director Salee. Have we considered, I know it hasn't come up at the Public's, um, Works Committee level. But is there any possibility of moving forward with maybe completely outsourcing the collection of the trash? And getting it done cheaper and not having to pay the insurance and the pensions. And, uh, deal with the lack of labor. Um, you know, and putting it on to the private sector. I, I just would like to have, uh, your, share your thoughts and what your. Um, you know, what your opinion is with that approach.
So I appreciate the question. Uh, solid waste, when we started, the mirror did bring up a, a point that. You know, we were trying to reduce that by 50%. Um, I just want to make sure everyone understands, when I started, I believe we had 32 people in that division. He was correct by contract. A contract that was signed years before I became Public Works Director. That was a contractual obligation, have three people on a truck, have a defined amount of routes. Um, the first contract that I negotiated with the help of the city attorney's office, we removed a lot of that. Uh, and we became a more efficient department. Uh, right now, presently, we have 18 positions in that department. Uh, because of long-term employees and vacation, because the city does have a, a very generous vacation for long-term employees. They get four or five weeks vacation. When you do the math, it equates a lot of time off. It's plus your 15 sick days and your holidays. Uh, so we, it's very challenging to get below that number. But the other reason we're not at a 50% level. Is because two years ago, the city took over the transfer station. Uh, for the last 30 years, we had a private hauler doing that, running the transfer station. And because of the constraints on the recycling component that came first before the city, we had to show cost savings. So within that department and within that labor component, we took over the transfer station, no extra full-time people. We did it within our staff. That we presently have. And it's allowed us to number one, save the city, probably close to $250,000 a year. But I also believe anyone that's gone down to that transfer station in the last six months to a year, cannot argue that the transfer station is far cleaner. Better run than a private hauler. Your argument about private, you know, subcontracting, those are discussions we always look at what's in the best interest of the city. Um, and it's something that we can always look at. There's pluses and minuses with each event. I will tell you, the facts are that we are one of, I think, 15 communities in the state that still self-collect. Um, and I know the mirror likes the idea of being responsive to residents. I think. Having a direct employee gives you benefits and you as a board have to make that decision. I will say that when you look at the economics though, right now, the city's been. Zero tax increases for six years of budgets. Everyone that's spoken tonight has talked about zero budget increases. Uh, for, you know, for my tenure here the whole time. Um, so. You know, it would be hard to say, hey, let's go out to subcontract to save money if there wasn't a real need, uh, uh. You know, we have people that have jobs, livelihoods, take care of their families. I'm very proud that all the reduction in staff that we did in this department was done through retirement. Um, and, and just being a more efficient department. And listen, we have ways to go. There's no two ways about it. This pandemic has opened up our eyes in regards to telecommuting, home commuting, homeworking. We're one of those departments though predominantly, and I'll say this from day one, we never stayed home. Half the state, half the other public works departments in the state furloughed guys from one week on, one week off. We put with the help of Deepa Joseph in the Health Department, we put standards in place that I think were very beneficial to us. It kept our staff working, uh, it kept our projects moving forward, all the projects that we were doing. Um, you know, I, I, truth, I couldn't be prouder of the, the people that I work with and, and, and what they did for the city in the last year.
Well, thank you, uh, Director Salee. I, I know that you have a good handle on your, um. Department and, uh, just wanted to share my thoughts. And, uh, you know, if there's any changes or anything. Um, that you want to discuss any further, um, you know how to, you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the Aldermen have any other questions for any of the divisions of Public Works? Alderman Viti.
Yes, thank you. Through you. Chairman Vitro to Director Salee. I just wanted to say thank you. And I know conscious of time, conscious of. Uh, uh, saying the obvious, but in preparation for the budget hearings, we all talked to. The areas that we're involved with, the Department of Health. Yesterday I talked with Paige. Uh, and she mentioned about Eisenhower Park and the stage being ready for June 26th. And everywhere you go, you hear that if it wasn't for Public Works, this wouldn't have happened. Karen Fortunati mentioned it tonight in her praise for the registrar voters. That they work with Public Works to get the Plexiglas and get the pandemic guidelines safe and all that is done. So I just want to be conscious of this. I have in a new role. As Vice Chair of the Public Works Committee, tried to use what leadership I had to support you. We have brought that forward to the mayor. Put it in writing. So we were brave to put it in writing. It's in the public record. It's an opinion. This deliberation body will decide what it will. But I just wanted to say. That Public Works is integral. It's not missed. And I say that in an informed. Uh, position. And I am concerned about labor. So thank you for all your efforts and, uh, we'll let. Uh, the decision-makers decide as we move forward.
Thank you, Al.
Any other questions from the other Alderman concerning any of the divisions of Public Works? I, I see none. I just want to thank you personally, Chris, for all the work you've done. I know everyone here has, has used your services from one time or other and, um. You do a remarkable job for the, uh, amount of people, the staff that you have. I know Steve Johnson always comes through and all the other, and, uh. Your project manager and everybody else that you have working for you. The city, uh, could not do without you. So thanks again for all your hard work.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it.
Uh, the last. Department on our agenda is the Super Commission, uh, Lee Cook. Is he still with us?
I can speak for that if you need, Phil.
I was just going to say, Chris, can you handle that too as well? So anybody have any questions for, uh, according to the Super Commission? You know, but it's a long night and I, I guess people have run out of questions.
It's been a long night. You're right about that, Phil.
And, and sorry that your department had to be last, Chris. Somebody has to be last.
Hopefully I'll be like Henry next year. We'll be first in line.
There you go. You can switch them around. Thanks again, Chris, for answering all our questions and for all the good work that you do for the city. Have a good night. I, I just wanted to close by saying at this point, uh, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before we recess, uh, just as a point of personal privilege. I do want to recognize that today is Justin Rosen's birthday today. So a very happy birthday to him.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Justin.
Mr. Chairman, um, just a point of information before we do adjourn. Uh, through you, maybe to Mayor Blake, do we have a, a date scheduled for the final vote?
We have a tentative date for May 5th.
Okay.
We have to check all the, all the, uh. Parts and pieces to make that happen, but that's the tentative date, Alderman Ginatasio. And everybody will have plenty of time to be notified, but thank you for your question.
Thank you.
So again, is this fine? Can I entertain a motion to recess subject to the call of the chair for the?
I make a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion has been made and accepted to go into recess. To further notice, um, any discussion on that? Harry Nun, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Alderman Viti.
Yes.
Alderman Gator.
Yes.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Yes.
Alderman Hardeman.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe.
Yes.
Alderman Pronti. Alderman Pronti.
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Sutton. Alderman Sutton. Alderman Tranquilly.
Yes.
Alderman Vitro.
Yes.
Alderman Vitale.
Yes.
Alderman Willis.
Yes.
Okay, we have 13 in fever and Alderman Sutton must be having technical difficulties.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are in recess. And everyone will be notified when the date of our next deliberation. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.